I call to order our resumed annual town meeting of the year 2022. The next order of business is the main motion under Article forty. Under Article forty, Mr. Paul Seigenthaler moves through citizens petition to amend the general bylaws. The text of the main motion is identical to Article forty in your warrant.
Hello fellow town meeting members. Thank you for stopping by my video. My name is Paul Seigenthaler, town meeting member from Precinct E. I am proposing a bylaw under Article forty, a citizens petition, petition, all right, to regulate the delivery of written materials to residences in Needham. The problem this bylaw seeks to address is the delivery of telephone books, newspapers, advertising materials intended for the residences of Needham but that land on the sidewalk and are most often left at the bottom of the driveway or at the bottom of the front walk, sometimes on the berm and sometimes in the gutter itself. In inclement weather, these materials are left to molder and turn to mush. The plastic disintegrates and goes down into the storm drains and into our waterways, causing pollution. This is not acceptable in Needham, either from a quality of life standpoint or from a pollution control standpoint. The solution here is to, to create a bylaw that requires delivery fully onto the property. The, um, the papers down at the bottom of the, of the sidewalk or bottom of the driveway or the front walk are too easily overlooked or ignored by residents. Most residents pick them up. The more inclement the weather is, the less likely they are to be picked up and cleaned up. Sometimes they are delivered in a way that it's not clear which residents they were intended for. And then who's to say, uh, whose responsibility it is to clean them up? But they sit there and they create, uh, this pollution issue. Any bylaw, the intent of any bylaw is twofold, but the primary intent is to create an expectation, set an expectation with the intended audience as to what we expect from people within Needham. So whether that's picking up your dog waste, uh, as you're walking your dog, or whether it's removing snow from your sidewalk and not blowing it into the street. Many of these bylaws, this one included, are rarely if ever enforced. I don't know that anybody's ever been fined for not picking up after their dog, but instead the bylaw is there to create that expectation that you should do this. And that's the most important, by far the most important reason for this bylaw is to create the expectation that it is unacceptable to leave these things in the street, on the public way, uh, or on the sidewalk. They have to be on the, the intended recipient's property. There's a question about enforcement. We'll leave enforcement up to the discretion of our professional police department, just as with all these other bylaws, again, riding bicycles on the sidewalk in, in the center of town, picking up after your dog, shoveling snow. The police can decide whether the harm, uh, and the complaints are worthy of, um, of enforcement. But for the most part, we, we don't worry about that. We worry about setting that expectation so that there won't be a need for enforcement. The question, uh, that has come up is, is this needed? We all know, or perhaps you, you know, that the, the Needham Times has announced that they will no longer be printing, uh, their paper, they're going to a digital. That still leaves telephone books and advertising materials, which I have seen within the last 12 months in my neighborhood, on the sidewalks. Um, there's also no reason to believe that another print newspaper couldn't fill the hole left by the Needham Times. Uh, or perhaps Hometown Weekly decides the postal service is too expensive now and decides to go to delivery. Important thing is that when this happens, there will be a bylaw on the books that says, we expect these materials to be delivered onto the property, not on the sidewalk in front. By setting that expectation, the newcomer or the, the delivery, uh, entity can decide how should they handle this, but at least they know what we're expecting. There is no downside to this bylaw. If no, nothing replaces the Needham Times, we're still controlling the phone books. We're still controlling advertising materials. And if nothing ever gets delivered, there's no harm on the bylaw. It hasn't created any issue. Um, but it does set that expectation, which is all important. And I know I'm repeating myself there, but, but it's all important. So I think the concern of the town is enforcement. Uh, I don't believe that that should be a concern. I think that's a, a non-issue. Um, we do in fact have a litter law, 2.5.2 bylaw that says you're not allowed to leave litter on the public way. Um, the gray area here is, are these, is this considered litter? Uh, if it's unwanted material, you could argue that it is litter. Um, or clearly the town hasn't enforced it. Um, the delivery people continue to throw it on the sidewalk. They don't think it's litter. Um, so this bylaw will definitely, um, clarify that issue and say, this is what you need to do. There was some discussion at the select board about boxes. Um, there is a reference to the box, to a potential box in the bylaw. It is misdescribed, uh, if that's a term. It's misdescribed in the, in the warrant description as mailboxes. You cannot deliver to mailboxes. However, there are places, I don't know that they exist in Needham, but there are places where uh, there's a separate delivery box, usually for the, for a local paper. There's a delivery box on the property. The only intent here is to grandfather those in to make sure that if somebody does have one of those boxes, they don't, uh, have to take it down, it can be used because it is containing these written materials that we want to control. Uh, I don't think there's any likelihood that somebody's going to go up and go out and put up a bunch of boxes, although that would not be illegal. Even with or without this bylaw, that would not be illegal if somebody wanted to do that. Um, and so the box issue really is just to grandfather those in. There's also, um, some question about inconvenience to the delivery drivers. Well, quite frankly, a lot of bylaws require inconvenience. It's inconvenient to pick up after your dog. It's inconvenient to make sure your snow blows off the sidewalk and onto your yard. Um, a little inconvenience where they need to slow down and make sure that the, the delivery is fully on the property is a small price to pay to keep our waterways clean. Uh, we're not asking them to get out of their car and go up and put it inside the screen door. Um, we are simply saying, um, you know, make sure it's all the way on the property. There was some discussion also as to why 15 feet. 15 feet, um, is really designed because our current setback, front yard setback is 20 feet from the street. And so if you put it exactly 15 feet, uh, into the property, that's five feet from, um, a house that is, has got the 20 foot setback. In reality, most of our houses are either closer or further away. And that's why the law is written so that it has to be at least 15 feet or no more than five feet from the house. So if it's further away, they get 15 feet on the property, they're fine, even if it's 30 feet from the house. If the house is right up on the street, they get it within five feet of the house, that's fine, even if it's not 15 feet, um, off the public way. So to summarize, there is no downside to this bylaw. There is no need to go out and create enforcement. Um, there is no need to incur expense. One could argue we will save money because when these are in the public way, whose responsibility is it to clean them up? You would argue the town should be cleaning them up and we obviously aren't going to allocate funds specifically for that. Um, so there is no expense to the town here. There is no enforcement requirement. Every bylaw needs enforcement provisions to have some teeth. Um, but the likelihood of this being enforced, um, and in a great manner is unlikely. But it does set that expectation. The most important thing is this sets the expectation for the delivery of written materials to the town, uh, to the residents of the town. And will hopefully go a long way towards beautifying our streets and keeping our waterways clean. I appreciate your listening to this video. I very much appreciate your support on Article forty, creating a bylaw to manage the delivery of written materials to the residents of Needham. Thank you for listening. I'll see you at town meeting.
Article forty, citizens petition amend general bylaws. This is an anti-littering provision. Normally I'd be in favor of a provision like this, but it does present some challenges should it be adopted. Significantly, it creates a distinction that printed materials, newspapers, left and are delivered at the end of the driveway are litter, while those delivered 15 feet from the end of the driveway are not. Furthermore, should the homeowner fail to clean up this printed material over days, weeks or months, it would become the fault of the person who delivered the newspapers, the person delivering newspapers at 5:30 in the morning for minimum wage, and they would be fined $25 for each offense. As for values we cherish in this town, such as fairness, equity and personal responsibility, this article seems mismatched. As for the enforcement of this proposed bylaw, it would be problematic to impossible. Enforcement would be uneven and unproductive. Unenforceable and poorly conceived bylaws weaken the public's respect for all laws. And the select board unanimously recommends this article not be adopted. Thank you.
Providing a reminder presentation, Mr. Seigenthaler.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. And thank you fellow town meeting representatives for your courtesy and allowing me to present, uh, this article ahead of time tonight. I just want to remind my fellow representatives that this article is about protecting the environment and setting important expectations in the town of Needham. Like so many of our other bylaws that set expectations, picking up after your dog, not removing snow from your property onto the street, various parking regulations. It tells people how we expect them to behave in Needham. The behavior is important and in this case very necessary to help protect the environment. It's a small step we can take. It's really not about enforcement. We'll leave that to our professional police department. They'll make those decisions as they do with all those other bylaws. They may enforce them, they may not. When a contractor left business cards, uh, on the sidewalk of my neighborhood in front of virtually every house in the neighborhood, I picked up one business card, I took it to the, to the police station. The lieutenant on duty looked at it, talked to me a little bit about it. He was not phased at all. He was not put out. He was going to call the, call or visit the, uh, the contractor and that was going to be the end of it. And I'm sure that's what happened. Certainly that's easier than opening a garbage bag to see who put it in the public bin, but, uh, that's another, that's another warrant article. I'd also like you to think, uh, as you deliberate on this, what if we do nothing? What if we don't pass this? There's really only three, three possibilities there. A hundred percent of our residents pick up those deliveries in front of their house on the street on the sidewalk. We already know that that's not happening. That doesn't come close to a hundred percent. The town cleans up those deliveries because they are in the public way. They're on the sidewalk, they're on the street. That's the town's property. There's no budget, there's no manpower for that. Um, and it certainly hasn't happened in the past. So we do nothing and continue to allow our environment to get polluted. And I don't think there's anybody in this room that finds that as acceptable. Um, finally, for those of you who are wondering if this is still necessary with the Times out of print, if no one ever delivers another piece of printed material to the town, to the residents of the town of Needham, there's no harm here. The bylaw sits on the books and that's it. Um, but if businesses decide to deliver their, um, their flyers or in the upcoming political season, who knows what's going to happen there? Or somebody decides a printed newspaper is, uh, you know, the way to go in the future. We've set an expectation and the expectation's been set as to how to behave in Needham, how to deliver in Needham onto the residences themselves. And if that's fair to everybody, so now they can plan in advance and we know we've set the, the expectation, we've, we've told them what we want. Final note, um, just a kind of a correction, I guess, is the way to put it. In the summary, there was a referral to mailboxes that was incorrectly written by the, by the person who wrote that warrant, uh, warrant article summary. Um, you can't use a mailbox for this. Um, the only referral to boxes in the bylaw that I wrote is just to grandfather in, in some municipalities, I don't know if there are any in Needham. In some municipalities, um, there is a mailbox, there's a, sorry, next to the mailbox, there's a separate box for newspaper deliveries and other written materials that aren't allowed to go in the mailbox. You see that in some towns, maybe more rural towns. I don't know if there are any in Needham, but this was just an effort to grandfather those in because there they are and, uh, they accomplish what we want to accomplish, which is to keep this, these materials off the streets. So I thank you for your, um, for your listening and for your deliberations. I hope you'll support this. Uh, there's no downside to this, to this bylaw and it, it will help to, to protect the environment. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Seigenthaler. Would the select board, uh, like to speak to it, Mr. Keen, Kevin Keen?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Um, town meeting members. Article forty, if adopted, does present some significant ramifications that town meeting might want to consider. Tomorrow's Boston Globe and New York Times delivered even two feet from my sidewalk is not litter. It creates no visual blight and no environmental danger. The only concern arises should the homeowner not be moving. Newspapers that the homeowner subscribes to and chooses to leave on the yard or the driveway over days, weeks or months are clearly the homeowner's responsibility. But this proposed bylaw contorts common sense and holds the home, the homeowners blameless. The failure of the homeowner, rather, becomes a fault of the person who delivered the newspapers. The person who delivered the newspapers at 5:30 in the morning in atrocious weather, on freezing roads for minimum wage months ago. This is unfair. As for enforcement, the proposed by, of the proposed bylaw, it'd be problematic to impossible, uneven and unproductive. As for the proponents' assurances that enforcement would not be pursued, that's very thoughtful. But in, but if this passes and becomes law, he doesn't get to make that call. He had the opportunity to write it, but for future Needham residents to act on it. Bylaws aren't written with a, we were just bluffing preamble. The penalty written into the bylaw matters. The potential fines in this bylaw are set very high and the unanswered civil tick, and unanswered civil tickets can morph into criminal complaints. Very plainly, this is the wrong way to treat anyone working in our community. And the select board recommends this article not be adopted. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Keen, discussion. Yes, ma'am.
Um, thank you, Moderator. My name is Carol Erwitz, Precinct J. And though I can certainly understand the, uh, citizens petition because there are many things that my neighbors do that are bothersome to me. But I think that, um, and I do nothing wrong, by the way. But I think if we load up our warrants and our laws with all the things that are small, we kind of ruin the environment by taking up so much of our time and energy for things that maybe speaking to a neighbor could resolve. So I'm opposed to this because I think we can find too many things that are personal grievances to put into law.
Thank you, Ms. Erwitz. Discussion. Yes, sir.
Uh, Dave Dirks, um, Precinct G. I have to bend over to talk here. So I oppose this, um, for a little bit of a different reason. I'm terribly saddened by the fact that, uh, the Needham Times dwindled and died. Um, and I remain hopeful that maybe someday, somehow we'll figure out a way to, you know, bring a local paper back to town. Um, I don't know if that would end up being some kind of a volunteer effort or how that would have to work, but I just don't want to snuff out that possibility. Delivery is a very expensive part of running a paper. And I think, um, it's really important to have a vibrant, uh, free local press. I think it's a terrible shame that, you know, no one's going to be covering these kinds of meetings and other things that are going on around town. And, um, I, I hope that, uh, someday we, we can get a paper back and I, I think we should do everything we can to keep that hope alive. And so I disagree with the proponent when he says there's no downside, um, to this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dirks. Discussion. Yes, in the back, in the black?
Catherine Koch in Precinct B. I just find it rather problematic that we're going to, the suggestion to make this bylaw with, with the assumption that nobody's going to enforce it. Um, if you're going to make a law, I think it should be with the intent to enforce it. And I just think this law is, is, I don't support it. People that go out, as Mr. Keen said, at 5:30 in the morning, delivering whatever they're delivering shouldn't be responsible because the homeowner can't pick up a piece of paper and throw it away. So I oppose it, like I say, with, with the problem that if you're going to make a law, and I don't see how it's going to get enforced, how they're going to determine whether it's 15 feet from the curb, two feet from the curb, if it blew onto the curb. It just doesn't make any sense to me because somebody can't pick up the paper. Anyways, I thank you for listening. Um, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, discussion, the main motion under Article forty. Hearing none, we come to the vote. Under the main motion under Article forty, a citizens petition, um, sponsored by Mr. Paul Seigenthaler, moves to amend the general bylaws. The text of the main motion, the citizens petition, is identical to Article forty in your warrant. It's a majority required for passage. On the main motion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed by nay? The nays have it. The motion fails and I declare Article forty disposed of. The next order of business is Article twenty-one. Under Article twenty-one, Mr. Robert Dermody moves to appropriate for Emory Grover renovation. The text of the main motion under the article is identical to Article twenty-one appearing in your warrant.
Hi, my name is Bob Dermody. I am a member of the Community Preservation Committee. This presentation will address warrant Article twenty-one, which seeks funding for the Emory Grover project. The article requests $19.4 million for the restoration and renovation of the historic Emory Grover School Building. I will address the Community Preservation Committee's process and explain the CPC contribution to the total funding request. The Community Preservation Committee evaluates each project application guided by the Town CPA Plan. We carefully consider the funds available each year through CPA and how expenditures affect our ability to fund future projects. Each year CPC tries to fund as many worthy projects as possible to benefit all town residents. The committee has been following the Emory Grover project very closely for several years through all its planning and design development stages. As part of our due diligence, we have met with and received input from various town boards and committees, including the select board, town manager, director of finance, finance committee, Needham Public Schools, Needham History Center and town residents through our public hearing process. Article twenty-one seeks a total of $19.4 million. The CPC contribution requested is $6 million. This will be made up of $2 million from CPA free cash and $4 million to be borrowed under the direction of the town manager and select board. The Permanent Public Building Committee and the architect provided data demonstrating that the amount eligible to be funded by CPA funds is much greater than the requested amount of $6 million. Potentially up to 80% of the total building cost. The Community Preservation Committee believes that this project is worthy of funding with CPA funds and that it clearly meets a general objective of Needham CPA Plan, which is to fund the rehabilitation of historic resources with special emphasis on town-owned buildings. This project would also achieve a specific goal of the Needham CPA Plan with respect to historic resources, which is to preserve buildings that are listed on the Massachusetts State Register of Historic Places or have been determined by the Needham History Center to be significant in the history, archaeology, architecture or culture of the town. The History Center has made it clear that the Emory Grover project meets all of these factors. In fact, the Emory Grover is listed on the United States National Register of Historic Places. This is the highest rating a building can receive, indicating its importance and value to our community. The Emory Grover was constructed in 1897 as the town's high school and has served the Needham Public School System ever since. Renovation of this important historic landmark provides several unique opportunities. It will preserve an important piece of town history. It will preserve a gateway building into downtown. And it will continue the investments we have made in our town center as we did with the Needham Town Hall project and the ongoing renovation to the Town Common. CPA funds will primarily be used to restore the historic architectural features of the building, including the masonry facade, entryway arches, roof, eaves, cornices and other important historic and structural details. The Emory Grover is the oldest and most architecturally significant town-owned building. The time to save it is now. The Community Preservation Committee respectfully requests your enthusiastic support for Article twenty-one. Thank you.
Thank you to the moderator and to the office of the town manager for providing this forum to address town meeting members. By vote of five to three, the Finance Committee recommends adoption of Article twenty-one to appropriate $19,400,000 for the renovation of the Emory Grover Building and for limited renovations of the Hillside School for temporary use by the school department during the Emory Grover renovations. Since the funding proposed in the warrant was first presented to the Finance Committee on April 6th, the Finance Committee has had multiple discussions regarding the funding sources and recommends by a vote of six to two, that town meeting adopt Mr. Riley's motion to amend Article twenty-one by increasing the borrowing authorization by $4,500,000 and by decreasing the appropriation from free cash by the same amount. I will first summarize the background of this article and the potential need for supplemental appropriation in the fall. I will then summarize the rationale for the recommendation that town meeting amend the funding sources under Article twenty-one. As a reminder for re-elected town meeting members and as a summary for newly elected town meeting members, this past October, town meeting considered and approves design funding for the Emory Grover renovation. At the time, the Finance Committee supported the temporary relocation of the school department to Hillside while expressing concerns about prioritizing the Emory Grover project and having a plan on how to fund the Mitchell, Pollard and DPW building projects within established debt limits. Nevertheless, town meeting voted to approve design funding for Emory Grover. The Finance Committee places great weight on the actions of town meeting and it is on this basis of town meeting's vote in October that the Finance Committee recommends adoption of Article twenty-one. To be clear, financing of the renovation of Emory Grover does fall within established debt limits under either the funding proposed by the main motion or under the funding proposed by the motion to amend. However, the concerns expressed by the Finance Committee in October regarding the financing of all identified capital projects, including Mitchell, Pollard and the DPW complex, remain unresolved. It is important to note that the appropriation in Article twenty-one of $19,400,000 is still an estimate of the total cost of the Emory Grover renovation. In late March, the Finance Committee was informed that based upon two cost estimates and the desire expressed by the Permanent Public Building Committee to include a 20% contingency allowance, the total costs may actually be higher. The current estimate of this overage is $2 million, but the total cost will not be known until bids are in hand in the fall, driving this uncertainty in costs arising inflation, ongoing supply chain disruptions and variability in the initial cost estimates. In consultation with members of the select board, Permanent Public Building Committee, Community Preservation Committee and School Committee, the Finance Committee recommends approving the $19,400,000 this time in the hopes of enticing bidders in the fall. If received bids exceed the $19.4 million, then a request for an additional appropriation may have come before town meeting in the fall. But it is also possible that no appropriation will be required. In any event, the Finance Committee would assess any additional request for appropriations at that time. Due to the continued uncertainty of the total costs of the Emory Grover project and there being several other identified capital needs in town, the Finance Committee believes that it is most prudent to spread out costs over time in regular and predictable manner, rather than funding nearly one quarter of the project upfront with free cash. This is justified because the benefits of the renovated Emory Grover building will be distributed across multiple decades of the building's life. It is reasonable that if future residents are to share in the benefits of the building, then they can be expected to share in a portion of the costs. The liquidity and flexibility afforded by free cash should be retained until costs for this and other identified capital needs are better understood. Finance Committee recommends adoption of Article twenty-one and Mr. Riley's motion to amend. Finance Committee recommends adoption of Article 21 and Mr. Riley's motion to amend.
There are two motions to amend. First, a motion to amend by Mr. Richard M. Riley. Mr. Riley's motion to amend reads as follows. Moved that the main motion under Article 21 be amended by deleting in the fourth line the sum $4,500,000 and inserting in place thereof $2,250,000, and by deleting in the seventh line the sum $11,900,000 and inserting in place thereof the sum $14,150,000. That motion to amend has previously been posted on the town website with materials and addressed in a video presentation. The second motion to amend comes from Ms. Mary Ann Cooley. Ms. Cooley moves that the main motion, should it be, should it be passed, that the main motion be accompanied by an emergency preamble. Ms. Cooley's motion reads as follows. Moved that the main motion under Article 21 is amended by adding an emergency preamble. Quote, "This is an emergency measure necessary for the immediate prevention," excuse me, "preservation of the safety and convenience of the town, and therefore, final vote of Town Meeting passing this measure shall be immediately operative." The effect of an emergency preamble does away with the right to referendum, which exists in our town charter, for town citizens to take action other than action taken by you here at this representative town meeting. For that reason, it requires a two-thirds vote for passage.
I have one more question.
Yes.
Mr. Moderator, if you could rule last night, our requirements submitted by the Community Preservation Committee were not amendable?
They are not amendable as to the substance of the motion itself. This is an emergency preamble which would attach to the motion. So the body of the motion cannot be changed, the request from CPC cannot be changed.
Mr. Moderator, I think, I was just trying to say the First Amendment is not, is not changing in this time of year.
Okay, these are informational. The First Amendment changes the funding source and has nothing to do with the CPC's funding source. It changes the town's funding source. So it is a, these are matters that are within the scope of the town because the borrowing authority and the contribution from cash is altered. It does not affect the appropriation that is made by the Community Preservation Committee pursuant to its vote. You're quite welcome. First, to address the main motion under Article 21, Mr. Dermody, a member of the Community Preservation Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening, Town Meeting members. I'm Bob Dermody, member of the Community Preservation Committee and also a Town Meeting member from Precinct G. I would like to highlight a few key points about the CPC process and explain the CPC contribution to the total funding request for this article. The Community Preservation Committee evaluates each project application guided by the town's CPA plan. We carefully consider the funds available through CPA funds this year and how expenditures may affect our ability to fund future projects. Each year, the committee tries to fund as many worthy projects as possible to benefit all town residents. This year, we received requests for many worthy projects, which resulted in five warrant articles requesting CPA funding for your consideration. This article, number 21, requests a total of $19.4 million for the restoration and renovation of Emory Grover for continued use as the school administration offices. The CPA contribution for this request is $6 million, $2 million from CPA free cash, and $4 million to be borrowed from CPA. The remaining amount, $13.4 million, will be funded from other town sources as proposed by the Select Board. The Emory Grover building is the oldest and most architecturally significant town-owned building. The time to save it is now. The Community Preservation Committee respectfully requests your support for Article 21. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dermody. To speak to the, pardon me, the motion to amend regarding the funding source beyond the CPC, Ms. Cooley. And will you also address the motion for the emergency preamble?
I can address that as well. Is the Finance Committee going to address the funding source also? They are, right? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Town Meeting members. Town Meeting listened to the case for Emory Grover last fall and appropriated design funds. Now, this is a request back for construction funds with an emergency preamble to ensure that work begins on Hillside, the swing space, in time for Emory Grover occupants to move in in the fall. The project design is not finished, so I want to note that the project has not actually been put out to bid for construction. It is possible, given the current inflationary environment everywhere, but particularly in construction, that we may come back in the fall seeking additional funding, but things could change between now and then, so we'll wait and see what happens, and we're here with this request now to continue to move the project forward. The recommendation by the town's professional finance staff was to use additional free cash that the town had to diminish the current need for borrowing, but I want you to know that the amendment that is coming toward you from the Finance Committee is a compromise on the funding between free cash and additional debt for the town that both boards can agree on. The bottom line is this: Emory Grover needs to be renovated. I'm grateful to the CPC for their recommendation of $2 million of CPA free cash and $4 million of CPA debt to support this project, which has historical preservation merit as the town's oldest building and original high school. I appreciate Town Meeting's support of the recommendation to fund the construction of the building, or I ask for your support to do that. The Select Board asks for your support of the project and the amendment and the emergency preamble going forward tonight. Thank you.
Speaking on behalf of the Finance Committee, Mr. Josh Levy.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, all the Town Meeting members. By vote of five to three, the Finance Committee recommends adoption of the main motion under Article 21 to appropriate $19,400,000 for the renovation of the Emory Grover Building and for limited renovations of the Hillside School for temporary use during the Emory Grover renovations. Since the funding proposed in the warrant was first presented to the Finance Committee following the CPC vote on March 30th, the Finance Committee has had multiple discussions regarding the funding sources and recommends, by a vote of eight to one, the Town Meeting adopt Mr. Riley's motion to amend by increasing the borrowing authorization by $2,250,000 and decreasing the free cash allocation by the same amount. The Finance Committee had previously expressed a preference to shift $4.5 million of the appropriation from free cash to borrowing, but we now modify that recommendation in the interest of reaching concurrence with the Select Board. The prospect of concurrence on this topic of how and when to fund the renovation of Emory Grover has at times felt distant. Many Town Meeting members will recall that in October, this body considered and approved design funding for the Emory Grover renovation. At the time, the Finance Committee supported the temporary relocation of the school administration to Hillside while expressing concerns about prioritizing the Emory Grover project ahead of having a plan in place to fund the Pollard, Mitchell, and DPW building projects. Nonetheless, Town Meeting did vote to approve design funding for Emory Grover, and the Finance Committee places great weight on the actions of Town Meeting, and it's on this basis of Town Meeting's vote in October that the Finance Committee recommends adoption of Article 21. Financing of the renovation of Emory Grover does fall within established debt limits, either under the funding proposed in the main motion or under the funding proposed in the motion to amend. However, the concerns expressed by the Finance Committee in October regarding the funding of all identified capital projects still remain unresolved. One important aspect to note that the Chair of the Select Board also noted is that the estimate of $19,400,000 may have to change. In late March, the Finance Committee was informed that based upon two cost estimates and a desire expressed by the Permanent Public Building Committee to include a 20% contingency allowance, the total costs may actually be higher. The current estimate of this overage is $2 million, but the total cost will not be known until bids are in hand in the fall, driving this uncertainty, as the Chair of the Select Board mentioned, ours is rising inflation, ongoing supply chain disruptions, and variability in initial cost estimates. In consultation with members of the Select Board, Permanent Public Building Committee, Community Preservation Committee, and School Committee, the Finance Committee also recommends approving this appropriation at this time in the hopes of enticing bidders in the fall. Due to the continued uncertainty of the total costs for the Emory Grover project and there being several other identified capital needs in the town, the Finance Committee believes that it is most prudent to spread out costs over time in a regular and predictable manner rather than to so heavily rely upon upfront funding of free cash. This is justified because the benefits of the renovated Emory Grover building will be distributed across multiple generations, and it's reasonable that if future residents are to share in those costs, share in those benefits, they can also share in those costs. Though the Finance Committee endeavored to find uses for all certified free cash, the Finance Committee notes that no other capital project in recent memory has been funded upfront with so much free cash. The main motion proposes funding 23.2% of the project through free cash. By comparison, 18.1% of the appropriation for the Jack Hogswell Building and 16.5% of the appropriation for the Memorial Park Fieldhouse were funded with free cash. No amount of construction costs for the Public Safety Building or the Needham Millium School were funded through free cash. The Finance Committee recommends adoption of Article 21 and Mr. Riley's motion to amend. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Levy. Discussion, the main motion, the motions to amend under Article 21. Mr. Cremmons?
Just general discussion, or specifically the amendments?
I'm sorry? Would you go to a microphone? I can't hear you.
I just wanted to discuss this, not specifically the amendment, so I might have just jumped on.
No, everything is on the floor. The main motion, the two amendments. You can, you can discuss all of them, or you can discuss one of them, whatever you prefer, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is John Cremmons from Precinct G. I feel a little like Don Quixote here, but up until the past year or two, I've had, I felt I had a pretty good understanding of the 10% debt limit rules and regulations that Needham had adopted long ago and had adopted with good reason. Last October, at the special Town Meeting, Town Meeting approved Article 24 to appropriate a borrow $1,475,000 for architectural design and engineering for the construction and our renovation of the Emory Grover building to be spent under the blah, 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 as a precursor to this Article 21. For me, that Article 24 and this Article 21 calls into question whether that 10% debt limit was simply a guideline or, as I always believed, a fiscal red line not to be crossed. I don't see how we can move forward on Emory Grover with Mitchell, Pollard, and the DPW projects, i.e., plural, the DPW garage and the Daley Building, with all of those on the horizon. The 10% debt limit rules and regulations, I mean, they're a good thing. They were put in place to at least encourage, if not force, fiscal responsibility onto this collective body. I personally don't want to see the Mitchell or Pollard projects compromised in any way, but I also don't want to see us compromise our own debt limitation rules, which then brings us back to this Article 21 and/or the DPW Article 27, which we'll be discussing in a few minutes. Mr. Levy did just answer a lot of my questions, but the Finance Committee did initially approve the funding for the article, but the vote was five to three. So I would just respectfully ask if, if Mr. Levy or somebody from the Finance Committee to address how we're going to do all these projects, especially in light of the two Public Safety Building constructions just now being completed, how we're going to do all that and not cross our own financial red line? And I also do find it disconcerting that we haven't even approved this article yet, and we're already anticipating asking for $2 million additional dollars. I just see that going on and on. So if somebody from the Finance Committee could address the debt limit impact on all these projects.
Certainly, Mr. Cremmons. I'll direct your question to Mr. Levy, the Chair of the Finance Committee.
Thank you. As of this time, the full facility financing plan for all the projects that were previously mentioned by the Town Meeting member has not been devised yet, so we do not know what the full cost for all of those projects will be, how they will be funded, and what their effect on the debt limits will be. The Finance Committee had hoped to have that in hand by now, but that is not yet available.
Mr. Levy, did you want to address the member's question about the 10%?
Oh, yes. Thank you. 10% is a guideline that we try to adhere to, but from time to time, we have gone over that number with the anticipation and a strict plan on how we will get back under that number. There is a second limit, the 3%, if I can address that as well?
Certainly.
So the 10% limit includes all debt, so debt from CPC, debt from the general funds, debt from the enterprise funds. There's a second limit, the 3% limit, which says that debt from the general fund specifically should not be more than 3% of receipts from the general fund. That is a much more strict limit, and the town has never exceeded that limit.
Thank you, Mr. Levy. Discussion?
Mr. Moderator?
Ms. Cooley?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Mr. Moderator. I just want to make one more point, which is that this debt is specifically within the general fund debt, that 3%, and that does not get exceeded under any of the scenarios that we're talking about.
Discussion? Yes, sir, in the background.
Glenn Mulno, Precinct I, was Jay last year, but anyway.
I'm sorry, sir, could you state your name again?
Glenn Mulno, Precinct I.
Thank you.
If I could maybe raise this a little bit.
Mr. Jakes will raise it for you. Just step back, Mr. Mulrow, and we'll...
There you go. Thanks.
That was excellent.
Thanks.
Get down on one knee, please, Mr. Mulrow, and help us out.
That's good. So I've been a resident of Needham for 24 years, and in that time, there has always been an active or upcoming school project or some large expenditure that, for the school system. This building has been in disrepair, I think, my whole 24 times as well, 24 years as well. I think the people that work in our town and in this facility deserve a decent place to work. I don't think selling the building or doing something else with it and having them lease someplace else makes sense. I think if we project out 25 more years, there'll still be constant school projects and building redesigns and whatever. So I think we should just build this now, repair this now, and just get it done with. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Hearing none, we come to the vote. There are three items that require your vote. First, there is a motion to amend, and the motion to amend to which I'm referring is Mr. Riley's motion to amend. This is the motion to amend I have previously read to you. It's been posted on the town's website, and it would modify the funding source from the town side of the contribution to the project described in the main motion. The motion to amend, the financing sources, requires only a majority for passage. So first, on Mr. Riley's motion to amend, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay?
Nay.
The ayes have it, the motion carries majority declared on a voice vote. The next item for your consideration is Ms. Cooley's amendment. Ms. Cooley's amendment would dispense with the 20-day period after Town Meeting for referendum on representative Town Meeting action. It would add an emergency preamble, and for that reason, it would, if the emergency preamble were to pass, this matter would become immediately effective following the adjournment of our meeting as opposed to having that waiting period for the citizens. So it requires a two-thirds vote for passage. On the Cooley motion to amend, the emergency preamble, two-thirds required for passage. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay?
Nay.
The ayes have it, two-thirds declared on a voice vote, the motion carries. This brings us to the main motion as amended by your action. Mr. Robert Dermody moves to appropriate for the Emory Grover renovation. The total sum of the appropriation, $19,400,000. But for the amendments, you have $19,400,000. Nineteen million. It's wishful thinking. What's, nineteen million, four hundred thousand. I hope I don't need glasses. That would be sad. The but-for your amendments to the main motion just enacted, the text of the main motion is identical to Article 21 in your warrant. The main motion under Article 21 requires authorization for borrowing for indebtedness. For that reason, under state law, Town Meeting must approve this by a two-thirty... For that reason, under state law, town meeting must approve this by a two-thirds vote, two-thirds required to incur debt on behalf of the town. So, on the main motion as amended, two-thirds required for passage. All those in favor, please signify by saying "aye."
Aye.
Opposed by "nay."
Nay.
The ayes have it, two-thirds declared on a voice vote, the motion carries, and I declare Article 21 disposed of. The next...
Twenty-three.
Yep. The next item for your action and consideration is Article 23. Under Article 23, Mr. Matthew Borelli moves that the town appropriate for general fund cash capital. The text of the main motion is identical to the article appearing as 23 in your warrant.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Town meeting members, Article 23 is an annual article to fund general cash capital requests. This year, those requests can be found on page 38 of your warrant. They range from funding for Big Belly Trash Receptacles to replace some of the existing barrels that we have in town, which is priority to help with trash collection, to funding for the Center of the Heights, personal protective equipment, RTS improvements, traffic in the town's fleet. Descriptions can be found on all these items in your warrant. The Select Board unanimously requests adoption of this article. Thank you.
Thank you to the moderator and to the Office of the Town Manager for providing this forum to address town meeting members. By a vote of nine to zero, the Finance Committee recommends adoption of Article 23, appropriate for general fund cash capital in the amount of $3,116,314. This amount is identical to the total printed in the table of the warrant and reflects a correction of misprinted amount appearing in the text above. Articles similar to this one appear annually for the appropriation of free cash to purchase or replace capital items such as furniture, technology, or fleet vehicles according to a regular replacement schedule. This schedule aims to ensure that capital is replaced once it has achieved its useful life expectancy. For specialty fleet vehicles in particular, the town often assesses whether the useful life can be extended through repair in order to delay costly replacements. The Finance Committee discussed each of the capital items in Article 23, and detailed descriptions appear in the article information found in the warrant. I will not repeat those descriptions here, and I will instead highlight the items that do not regularly recur year to year. This article would fund the purchase of new Big Belly Trash Receptacles to be placed at parks currently served by traditional barrels. One advantage of Big Belly Trash Receptacles is that they will be able to remotely alert the Department of Public Works when they're full, so that they are emptied in a timely manner. The Center at the Heights generator installation funds the design of an upgraded generator system that is more powerful than the current generator and can run automatically. The current generator is temporary, portable, and undersized in the event that the building needs to be powered as a shelter and warming space. The current generator will be moved to the library. The construction and installation phase for the generator is estimated to cost $180,000 and is anticipated to be requested at the 2023 annual town meeting. The Center at the Heights space utilization study will examine whether there are ways to reconfigure the internal space of the building to accommodate additional programming. The geographic information system update is conducted every 10 years. It is necessary to document any changes that have occurred in the intervening years to above-ground physical structures and features. These updated maps are necessary for accurate planning and design. The rooftop unit replacement funds the design of new rooftop HVAC systems at Broadmeadow and Elliot. The existing systems are past their useful life and are inefficient and costly to maintain. In addition, they use refrigerant that is no longer easily available in the United States. The construction and installation phase for the new units is estimated to cost a total of $5,250,000 and is anticipated to be requested at the 2023 annual town meeting. The recycling and transfer station improvement funds funds the design of repairs to the tipping pits to make sure that it stays structurally safe. The construction phase is currently estimated to cost $160,000 and is anticipated to be requested in fiscal year 2024. These repairs are needed to, needed and unaffected by the outcome of the proposed RTS service delivery study under Article 7 appearing earlier in the warrant. In the fleet program, there's one addition to the fleet for DPW Parks and Forestry Division. The remaining six vehicles are replacements for aging or frequently used vehicles. Seven vehicles previously identified for replacement this year were assessed, and it was determined that their replacement can be deferred to a later date with no disruption in operations. The Finance Committee recommends adoption of Article 23.
Presenting the summary presentation on behalf of the sponsors, which is the Select Board, Mr. Borelli.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Town meeting members, Article 23 is an annual article that includes cash capital items for general government and school departments. It includes items that affect community service, public safety, and public works. The amounts and descriptions of all the items can be found on pages 38 to 42 of your warrant. They include increasing our Big Belly Trash cans, improvements to the Center at the Heights, school capital projects and replacements, as well as RTS capital to allow for design of the tipping facility. The Select Board unanimously recommends adoption of Article 23. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you very much, Mr. Borelli. And to provide the summary presentation on behalf of the Finance Committee, Mr. Josh Levy, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. By vote of nine to zero, the Finance Committee recommends adoption of Article 23 in the amount of $3,116,314. The Finance Committee discussed each of the capital items in Article 23, and detailed descriptions appear in the warrant. This article would fund the purchase of Big Belly Trash Receptacles, Center at the Heights generator installation, which is an upgraded generator system that's more powerful than the current generator system and can run automatically. The current generator there will be moved to the library. Construction and installation phase for the generator is estimated to cost $180,000 and is anticipated to be requested at the 2023 annual town meeting. The geographic information system update is conducted every 10 years and is necessary to document any changes that have occurred in the intervening years to above-ground level physical structures and features. Rooftop unit replacement funds the design of new rooftop HVAC systems at the Broadmeadow and Elliot schools. The existing systems are past their useful life and are no longer efficient, and they are costly to maintain. The construction and installation phase for the new units is estimated to cost $5,250,000, anticipated to be requested at the 2023 annual town meeting. The recycling and transfer station improvements funds the design to repairs of the tipping pit to make sure that it stays structurally safe. This is needed and unaffected by the study that town meeting previously approved in Article 7. In the fleet program, there's one addition to the fleet for the DPW Parks and Rec, excuse me, Parks and Forestry Division. The remaining six vehicles are replacements for aging or frequently used vehicles. In earlier discussions, there were seven vehicles that were previously identified for replacement, but they were assessed, and it was determined that their replacement can be deferred to a later date. This is a common occurrence for vehicles, to make sure that we extend their life as long as possible. Finance Committee recommends adoption of Article 23.
Thank you, Mr. Levy. I'm going to open it up for discussion, but I just wanted to remind town meeting that in connection with our annual operating budget, Article 10, we enacted a rule which is also applicable to, expressly applicable at the time, to Article 23. And those of you who have been town meeting members are familiar with it. It is our customary rule that within this main motion regarding cash capital, any motion to amend a particular item to increase its funding has to identify within the same article a line item that would be decreased in order to fund the increase that would be the subject of a motion to amend. So that's our procedural rule. Now I open it up to discussion on the main motion under Article 23. Mr. Cremens?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. John Cremens, Precinct G. Two questions. The first, what becomes of the old furniture being replaced in both the town offices and the schools? Then my main question is with line item three, the Center at the Heights utilization study. There's been a number of studies proposed in the past warrants that I've understood and agreed with. There's been some studies that I cringed at, but bit my tongue, but a space utilization study for $75,000. I was at the center last Monday night for the warrant discussion. Mr. Moderator, you were there doing your annual orientation meeting for the newly-elected town meeting members, and you had your, appropriately so, you had your own room for the presentation?
Don't bring me into this, Mr. Cremens. I just go where the League of Women Voters tells me to go. I never, ever waver.
You're in this. After that meeting, we all joined our respective precinct meetings and rooms throughout the center to discuss the warrant, and everything just went great. If you combine that $75,000 in this article with the $60,000 that proponents of Article 26, that we'll be discussing in a few minutes, and we're going to be paying a professional space planner, a professional space planner, we're going to be paying him or her $60,000 in addition to the 75, that's $135,000 to study space utilization at the center and the library. Heck, for $135,000, we could hire our own full-time professional space planner, which would be a really bad idea. Back to Article 23, is there somebody who could clarify for me the need to study space utilization at the center? And maybe we'll pick up on this when Article 26 comes around.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Cremens. The member has two questions. One is, what is the disposition of the old furniture that is referenced in here in Article 23, and also to speak on the space utilization study? Mr. Borelli, member of the Select Board.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. First question regarding the furniture, that furniture will be disposed of because this isn't to upgrade the furniture, it's really to replace the furniture that is in disrepair. So the idea is to actually dispose of that furniture, throw it away, I guess, when I say dispose of. The second question, member's question regarding the utilization study, it's really a review of all the programmatic needs. It's going to be where we hire someone, and I think was mentioned, a designer, to look at the spaces. Now, we're not just looking at the interior spaces, we're looking at the exterior spaces and seeing if there's a better way, it's highly utilized, to make the space function. And in part, in doing that, you have to look at, if walls are going to be moved, what do you have to do with the lighting? What do you have to do with the HVAC? There might be a subcontractor designer involved in that. So it's a large global utilization study of that facility, which has been estimated to be $75,000 because it is going to be detailed and give us an idea of where we're moving. But it's not just the interior spaces, a cursory look, it's an actual in-depth look of the inside and the outside of the facility for long-term use. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Borelli. Discussion? Yes, sir.
Thank you, David Escalante, Precinct I. I would just like to agree with the previous speaker. I don't think we need to make a huge case of this, but this particular article in the past and the rest of this article besides the space study is generally physical tactile things. We buy them, we replace them, we use free cash. As far as I can recall, in quite a few years going to town meeting, space studies are usually in a separate article. I don't understand why the space study appears in this article this year. I don't think it's a good idea. I don't think it's a good precedent. There are other space studies that are in separate articles in this same town meeting warrant, and there's no explanation provided of why this particular space study appeared in this particular article, and I don't agree with it. That isn't a question, it's a statement. I would encourage the people in the front of the room to be consistent in how they approach these things and lacking a better way of approaching it in the future to keep space studies out of this article. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Escalante. Yes, sir.
Aaron Pressman, Precinct D. First, I'd just like to reconfirm with the Finance Committee the answer that they gave when we asked, when I asked during OPEB, that there is still about $52,000 in free cash that has not been allocated to anything yet.
Mr. Levy?
Thank you. As of right now, that is correct.
Thank you. Then, Mr. Moderator, I would like to make a motion, and the motion would be to add to the line item for the Traffic Management Committee's $50,000, an additional $50,000 from free cash. And the rationale for the motion is that, as we heard earlier in the meeting on Monday, when people go to the Traffic Management Advisory Committee with important safety needs and projects that they'd like to have, like warning signs and crosswalks, there's a long backlog. And if you look at the text of the current article, it says only one or two projects can be handled with the $50,000. So my motion is to give them an additional $50,000 so that they can do more projects and make the town safer. Thank you.
Okay, hold on, Mr. Pressman, just stay there for a second. I want to restate your motion to amend. Mr. Pressman moves to amend the main motion under Article 23 to increase the amount of the appropriation of $50,000 under Public Works Traffic Improvements, and as a source for those funds cites free cash. Is that correct?
That's correct. And I'll just add that I think there may be, people were thinking about a motion to put that free cash in the athletic facilities fund, and I think, you know, making our town safer for pedestrians is probably a better use of that right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pressman. So we have Mr. Pressman's motion, and we have the main motion under Article 23 for discussion. Mr. Levy to respond to the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I just want to state that there is a budget process that we use to create not just the budget, but also the cash capital items. One of the reasons that was cited by the movement of the motion is that he believes this is a better use than some other proposed use, but as it's constructed at town meeting, we don't really have the opportunity to discuss that other use. We're restricted just to discuss the uses within cash capital. So for the purposes of budgeting, it really is important for a lot of the people here to make sure that we, you go through the process when we're allocating the money. We can certainly talk about it at a town meeting, and it's not that the motion is on its face a poorly conceived motion, it's just that we don't know, we don't know what these monies are going to be used for. The people who would be implementing the funds have not requested them, and so they don't know what they're going to be used for. So there are just a lot of questions around it right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Levy. Discussion? Yes, sir.
I'm a little uncomfortable with this idea that this body is going to be budgeting by committee for all of these small items. One of the questions I have is if this motion to amend passes, does the town have the staff and resources to even spend that $25,000 or $50,000 extra that would be appropriated to it? If they can't do it, why would we give them the money?
Thank you, Mr. Frail. Mr. Pressman, you want to respond to that as the sponsor?
T Mac in town meeting, could we hear from him?
I'm sorry, what?
I think there's a representative from the Traffic Management...
Well, no, but I just thought you would address it first, and then we can always direct a further question. I just wondered what, if you had an answer for the member because you made the motion.
So I spoke to a member of the Traffic Management Advisory Committee before planning this motion, and he told me that indeed there are small projects that could be done, and they would appreciate having additional funds.
Mr. Moderator?
I don't know where that voice came from. Ah, right here. Okay, please, help me, help me, help me and stand. Thank you so much.
Mr. Moderator, Justin McCullen, Precinct D. I also stand here as Chair of the Traffic Management Advisory Committee, which is in the amendment or in the body that would be spending that money. I completely understand that there should be a process, and I respect the budgeting process. However, I can agree with the two other individuals as well as Mr. Pressman that there are items that are in the queue that are financially dependent and, you know, that don't necessarily hit the benchmark for capital expenditures or long-term planning, two-to-five, 10-year planning. But there are things such as radar speed signs, there are things that are the lower-hanging fruit that would be, you know, be able to be acquired and more mitigation for the citizens that would be. So I'm kind of, I am torn. I understand completely there's a budgeting process, and yes, it hasn't been requested more than what is normally allocated, but there definitely is a need, especially in the last couple of years, as, you know, speed has gone up, as, you know, there are more and more instances where mitigation, I think, could be, more money could be put in toward that, so. that, so.
Thank you, Mr. McCullen. Could I just direct the question to the Select Board? I just know that that's an advisory committee, but it would be the Select Board, I think, that would be charged with implementing this. Mr. Borelli to respond to the motion to amend.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I guess I will just go back to the budgeting process and the amount requested, and I think it's clear from what is printed in your warrant what that money would be spent on. And I think speculation from this town meeting moving forward of what it could be spent on might be better spent at a future town meeting in hearing the voices that we hear tonight in town meeting and making it a point to try to address some of the concerns for the funding of this article. I will say that the appropriation that would be removed was for the athletic facility fund, which was mentioned, and that is a known need, that we are building up that fund for future athletic projects, and it's a number that we think that we had that we can use towards that fund, which is a priority. So I would say in that vein that that was what we are looking to purpose that, which we have a known need for. This, from what I'm hearing, is there is concern about traffic mitigation measures, but I think just an arbitrary number right now, I think it would take a little more thought and then discussion and then another budget to town meeting if it's deemed that we should move forward with increasing the amount under this article.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. Thank you, Mr. Borelli. Discussion in the back.
On Tuesday, I received the report to town meeting dated May 2nd, which gave us a report on how prior town meetings we had approved money and how they had been spent. And as I looked at it, one of the things that concerned me is that we had appropriated money for a number of projects which hadn't in fact been spent. And it ties into what we're talking about here. I think one thing that town meeting, I think we are trying to say, is that there needs to be more communication from the town with the boards. There are things that I think the members are saying are our priorities that aren't getting heard. Like, for example, it looks like there's money we appropriated for playgrounds that hasn't been spent. And so the other night, we said we appropriated more because it's a priority, even though we previously appropriated money that hadn't got spent. There was money in the park and rec budget from last year that didn't get spent and got returned. And I do truly appreciate the idea that there should be a thoughtful budget process, and as I understand it, the amounts that were requested by the town departments were all approved by the Finance Committee. So the issue, for example, about the corner at Charles River and Central Avenue is not going to be solved by us giving $25,000 more to T-MAC. Because the, what has to be addressed is the idea that first you have to have a sidewalk, and you can't get a sidewalk because we have to fix all the sidewalks we have already before we put in a new one. And the problem with that rationale is that there are kids that can't cross the street now. So we have to have more of a conversation to try to actually solve the problems. So I appreciate the idea of putting, of moving money over, but I don't think that's the problem here. The problem is how to get the priorities addressed ahead of time and how to actually make some changes in the process as it stands. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. Discussion? Yes, sir, right in the middle here.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Doug Fox, Precinct D. I speak in support of the proposed amendment for additional money for T-MAC. I remember four years ago, pedestrian safety was a very hot topic in the town. I can actually recall two candidates for Select Board that year referred themselves as the pedestrian safety candidates when they were running. And if you look at all of the things we talked, we needed to improve at that point in time, behind the high school, front of the high school, across from Sudbury Farms, Dedham Ave, where Harris is, these places, which are severe risk to kids, still aren't solved. So I absolutely say throw more money at T-MAC, and I say, I hope it sends a message to town leadership to take care of pedestrian safety and the promises that they were making. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Discussion? Mr. Bailey?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Eric Bailey, Precinct A. I was troubled Monday night, and I'm even more troubled tonight. We should not be legislating in this body at all. Pet projects, you could open your warrant to any page and look at any department and ask, should they get more money? I guarantee the answer is yes. Let the budget process go. If there is need for more money for playgrounds for Monday or transportation for tonight, attend the public hearings, make your views known to the elected officials, have it brought before town meeting through the proper process. I'm opposed to this amendment. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, sir. Discussion? Well, Mr. Pressman, we've heard from you, so let's move it around here. In the back, please.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator. Lawrence Cohen, Precinct F. I have a question for you, Mr. Moderator. If this body would seek to delete one of the appropriation provisions, what would be the best way to do it?
You can make a motion to amend that would delete the appropriation. The funds would then fall back into the reserve fund.
So I think based on that, Mr. Moderator, I would move to delete, and based upon two earlier speakers and their comments, I would move to delete from Community Services the sum of $75,000 for monies seeking appropriation to the Center at the Heights for space utilization study.
Okay, Mr. Cohen, let me just make sure that I have that correct. Mr. Lawrence Cohen moves to amend the main motion under Article 23, deleting the appropriation of $75,000 for Center at the Heights Space Utilization Study. I have that right?
That's correct.
Very good. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Discussion on the main motion, the motions to amend. Yes, sir.
Paul Sigandollar, Precinct D. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I just want to respond to the members, the representatives' earlier statement that we should not be legislating in this body. I do respect the budget process, and I'm not in favor of adding to the T-MAC in this case. However, we are a legislative body. That's what we do, we legislate. We are standing in a hall named for a man, James Hugh Powers, who was perhaps the greatest defender of the town meeting system of government that has been in effect since the days the pilgrims landed on this, on this land. And I can tell you right now, we are moving towards being a rubber stamp for the executive branch. And I want to tell, remind my fellow 20-year veterans of town meeting and the new, 20% new members of town meeting, that if we become a rubber stamp organization, a rubber stamp body here, the next step is obsolescence, and there goes our citizens' form of government. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, sir. Discussion? Yes, in the back.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Carol Lerewitz, Precinct J. Thank you. Wish I could have figured that out. There were just a couple of points here. I do, in defense of the other two town meeting members who felt that showing priorities should be done differently than just throwing money where money wasn't used. I'm not sure, in my opinion, if that's rubber stamping or just asking for a different methodology of having our voices heard. But my questions on these cash capital is, with the recycling and transfer station, if we are considering having a different method of disposing of our cash, disposing of our trash? Hmm. Huh? Right in, huh?
We're doing a good job of both, don't you think?
If we are reconsidering how we dispose of our trash, is this necessary for safety? That I'm all for it? Or should we decide what we're going to do before we start refurbishing what we have? And my second question is, on the fleet program, if we want to be a green town, are we considering in our purchasing and repairs using vehicles that are more environmentally appropriate, even if it means slightly downsizing, partially hybrid, whatever? Are we considering that in the plan? Because I think that should be a priority.
Thank you, Ms. Lerewitz. I will direct both of your questions to the sponsors, which is the Select Board, and Mr. Borelli to respond to the members' questions. Do you have them, sir?
I do. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Sure, first, on the RTS, the tipping scale, we are going to need this facility, no matter which way the study goes for municipal waste. So it is a necessity that will be used. Right now, it is a safety issue, it's in disrepair, and also it's under an order conditions from CONCON to address that facility. Second, as far as fleet replacement, yes, every vehicle is considered as replace it for an environmentally friendly alternative, and now as a green community, that is our pledge as well and required. Thank you, Ms. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Borelli. Discussion? Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. Georgina Arietta-Rutnick, Precinct J. Regarding the line item for school technology, I was just wondering what the security cameras are for and where are they going? Thank you.
Question for the sponsors, Mr. Borelli?
Mr. Moderator, I do see Chair Spangler here. Do you want to address this? Are you, thank you.
Mr. Spangler, please approach. Chair of the School Committee to respond to the members' question about the security cameras part of the request in cash capital for school technology.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you for the question. The school, security cameras are placed outside of schools and in public spaces to provide for the security of students and staff.
Thank you, Mr. Spangler. Discussion? Mr. Handel?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mo Handel, Precinct I. I'd like to return back to the previous member's comment with respect to the budget process. I do think it's important that town meeting can make a change when there is a critical, unknown, new priority that might not have been anticipated in an orderly budget process. But one of the things that defines this town is that it has a very well-organized, and I would say, public process for determining what our priorities are that are brought to town meeting. And to support those by and large doesn't mean a rubber stamp, especially if there are questions around those items that are answered. I do think we should be able to make a change if there is an extraordinary circumstance. I haven't heard an extraordinary circumstance this evening, and I would hope that we would adopt this article as presented. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Handel. Discussion? Yes, sir.
Mr. Moderator, I have to ask, is another amendment in order now, or are there too many already on the floor? Oh, I'm sorry, Henry Ragan, Precinct J. Excuse me.
Well, is it a secondary amendment to something that's already here in the form of a motion to amend, or is it something separate?
I'll make it, it's out of order.
Sorry?
I'm not sure, so if I make the amendment, can-
Why don't you describe the amendment hypothetically?
The amendment is how the study should be carried out, if in fact, we vote to carry out the study.
No, that would be beyond the four corners of the appropriation. We can't dive into that minutia here at town meeting. We can either appropriate or not appropriate. So that would not be in order.
So it would not be in order to direct how a study is to be conducted?
Correct.
And the reason for that again, Mr. Moderator? Because I didn't get that.
This is an appropriation of a requested amount of money. Town meeting does not have the power to direct the manner in which a study is being conducted. Wow?
Yes. Wow.
Take a seat, sir. Thank you. Discussion? Yes, ma'am.
Kate Weinegrad, Precinct E. I have a question regarding the $50,000 for traffic improvements. Who made that recommendation for that amount of money, and what was that recommendation based on specifically?
I'll direct that in the first instance to the sponsors. Mr. Borelli?
That is the annual appropriation we've had, $50,000. That's recommended by DPW. But it is clear from what we are hearing tonight that we do hear that we might have to relook at that amount and have some public discussion on whether or not that's the appropriate amount moving forward. Thank you, Ms. Moderator.
As a, just a follow-up to that, you know, it is a little concerning that a space study is $75,000 and then $50,000 for all traffic improvements. That seems like a-
Ma'am, you have to address me, not Mr. Borelli. It's not a conversation.
Oh, sorry. Sorry.
Thank you.
This is my first time.
That's okay. That's fine. I couldn't tell.
Mr. Moderator, it just seems odd that, or a misbalance of funds, and my concern, or I guess question, or both, is that, you know, is the Department of Public Works just asking for the same amount year-over-year? And maybe there needs to be some sort of discussion about where the funds are allocated and increases in coming years.
Sure. Well, that's a fair question for the sponsor. Mr. Borelli speaking on behalf of the Select Board.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. Under this line item, the T-MAC improvements, that has been the standard amount asked. I do not want to confuse it, though, with a future article that really dives into public works improvements that includes much more in-depth and millions of dollars in infrastructure funding. This line item is for, as I think was said earlier, kind of the low-hanging items that can be done quickly and nimbly by the town. But that is not the complete amount that is used to improve the town for safety aspects and transportation aspects and infrastructure aspects that you will see in further in this town meeting. Thank you, Ms. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Borelli. Discussion?
Ms. Moderator?
Yes. Mr. Bullion?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. John Bullion, Precinct H. Could we hear from Chairman Cosgrove of the Board of Health to speak to the utilization study at the Center at the Heights and the need for that?
I'd be happy to call on the Chair of the Board of Health at the request of the town meeting member. Mr. Ed Cosgrove?
Well, I'm not Chair of the Board of Health anymore, I'm just a current member. I think that the work that was done on requesting this money was done by the staff at the Center at the Heights, and there may have been a contribution from some member of the Health Department, but I'm not aware of that. Department, but I'm not aware of that. I do think, while I'm standing here, that there is some need to look at the utilization of the space in the Center of the Heights, particularly around the fitness room, which is frequently almost overcrowded. But that's as much as I could answer.
Thank you, Mr. Cosgrove. Discussion? Yes, in the back.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Rob Partridge, I am the Chair of the Board of Health, and I would request, Mr. Moderator, that we hear on the Center of the Heights topic from Tim McDonald, who is the Director of Needham Public Health, who is here.
Mr. McDonald, I think maybe in another room, is he not? Or -- oh, he just arrived. Wonderful. Good timing. We are asking for space purposes. We're asking our town employees to be outside and then come in as needed. Mr. McDonald, you're welcome at the request of the Chair to address town meeting.
Sure. And, Mr. Moderator, not a resident?
You're not a town resident?
No.
Is that right? So, Mr. McDonald is our Director of Health and Human Services for the Town of Needham. He is not a town resident and therefore cannot address this body without your consent. I seek your unanimous consent to have our town's Director of Health and Human Services address the body. Hearing no objection, I find unanimous consent. Mr. McDonald, you're welcome to speak to town meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, town meeting members. The question from Dr. Cosgrove and Dr. Partridge was about the space utilization study at the Center at the Heights. The Center at the Heights is a lovely building. It has a lot of unique spaces, some of which are underutilized. We have a beautiful deck, and I would tell you, it's only a slight exaggeration to say that there's a week in the spring and a week in the fall that the seniors use it, and the rest of the time, they think it's too hot or too cold. It's a lot of space. I don't know if it's put to the best possible use. Dr. Cosgrove mentioned the fitness room, which is a fairly small physical location. It is much more active than when we first moved into the building. The game room across the hall is very active as well, but there could be some, by smarter people than me, analysis of whether, if we move the fitness room into the game room, would that give it more space and would allow more seniors to do physical activity programs? So there is a lot of items in the Center at the Heights space study. There are a couple really unique spaces, like the deck, like the restaurant-grade kitchen, and that's why the cost is what it has been presented as. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Discussion? Mrs. Sockel.
On the first one, you have to lower it for... Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Lois Sockel, Precinct I. I'm sitting here, listening to the discussion, and a few things are going through my mind. One is the fact that Needham is a caring community. That's why I live here. It's caring. It's caring of its children, of its sports. We talk about -- we talked about last week, finding a place where there would be a skate park. Did we talk about that? Did we talk about kids playing tennis? Did we talk about that, too? I know you're talking about $75,000 that will make the lives of your senior citizens better. I don't believe some of what I'm hearing. We care about all our people in this town. We care about our schools. It's that what's -- that's why the ratings that came out last week had Needham high, way up there, beyond our city to the north, Needham. We care about our kids, and we care about our elderly. We fought hard to get that senior center. I can't tell you how many years I sat in this hallowed hall till we got that senior center. And now, they want $75,000. I passed -- I sat here with you the other night and passed $251 million. They want $75,000 to increase the quality of life. True, you could say Lois Sockel is talking because she's talking about her own group. Yeah, that's true. She's the ancient one in the hall. Okay? But I got news for you, kids. You're going to get there someday, too. Okay? So let's not figure over this. If the senior center says it needs it for its people, for the quality of their time there, think about that, okay? Remember your grandma.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Sockel.
Moderator.
Yes, in the back.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Georgina Arietta-Rutnik, Precinct J. And thank you to the previous speaker. We do care about our seniors, and we care about our kids. And actually, regarding this utilization study, I would like to put it out there that possibly the center could also be used for mixed-generation programming to make sure that our seniors and our students possibly could get together and do activities. Because oftentimes, I think the center is not open beyond a certain period of time on some days. So I would like to see it possibly used for other activities beyond 4:00 or 5:00 p.m. Thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you. Discussion? Yes, sir. Mr. Crocker.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I didn't want to disappoint you by not saying anything this town meeting. So I rise for the simple word of the words of civility and respect. So when we come here tonight, we come here knowing that a lot of people in town have put a lot of work into what we're looking at in our budget, every line item, every aspect of it. So we have -- we need to understand the respect of what goes into a lot of volunteers. Now, with that also comes the respect, the fact that we are here to weigh that, to weigh our understanding of that, of what we value in town. And maybe there's something we see differently, with the possibility of disagreeing, not because of disagreeing of disrespect, but disagreeing means we maybe see something different. So when we rise and have people talk about changing here or changing there, and a little bit of money here, a little bit of money there, it does not mean we are disrespect... My apologies, Mr. Moderator. Please just bear with me for a few minutes. So it is not coming with a disrespect. But when we do that, we have to do it in a respectful way. And everything that we say here needs to be done in a respectful way. And I believe, for the most part, we have, but we have to keep it that way. And one thing that's wonderful is that someone has risen and said, "Do we need that?" And so we question it. And so we have the benefit of someone questioning it. And then we have this -- my dear friend Louise... Or Lois. She really is a dear friend. We have the benefit of Lois being able to come up and say, "You know what? Never know. We need that." So I just rise and say that there is benefit in what we do in this agreement disagreement, where we're keeping the civility and the respect and understanding that it goes both ways, and that's why we do this. Thank you, Mr. Lawrence.
Thank you, Mr. Crocker. Discussion? Yes, sir. Mr. Rovner?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Jerry Rovner, Precinct B. I'd like to move the question, including all of the amendments that have been set forth.
Mr. Rovner moves the previous question to the main motion under Article 23 and the pending amendments. There are two. As you know, the motion is not debatable and requires a two-thirds vote for passage. Favorable action will bring the matter to an immediate vote. Unfavorable action will result in further discussion and debate. So, on the motion, move the previous questions to Rovner's motion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay.
Nay.
The ayes have it, two-thirds vote declared on a voice vote. Motion carries. This brings us to an immediate vote. We take our amendments in reverse order, with the most recent being brought up to you first. Mr. Lawrence Cohen moves to amend the main motion under Article 23, deleting the appropriation of $75,000 for a Center at the Heights space utilization study. It's a majority required for passage. On Mr. Cohen's motion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay.
Nay.
The nays have it, the motion fails. The next motion to amend is Mr. Aaron Pressman. Mr. Pressman moves to amend the line item within the main motion of Article 23 labeled "traffic improvements." Mr. Pressman seeks to add the sum of $50,000 to that line item and cites as a source for that additional funding, free cash in the town budget. On Mr. Pressman's motion to amend, a majority required for passage. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay.
Nay.
The nays have it, the motion fails. This brings us to the main motion under Article 23. Mr. Matthew Borelli moves to appropriate for general fund cash capital. The text of the main motion is identical to Article 23 in your warrant. This is not borrowing, so this is simply a majority for passage. On the main motion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. The ayes have it, majority declared on a voice vote. The motion carries, and I declare Article 23 disposed of. We come next to Article 25. Under Article 25, Mr. Matthew Borelli moves to appropriate for public works infrastructure. The amount of the appropriation sought is $3,951,000. The text of the main motion is identical to Article 25 in your warrant.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator, town meeting members. Article 25 is an annual article to fund public works infrastructure improvements. This year, the amount is $3,951,000. The description of these projects are contained in your warrant. You will note that some items are reoccurring, such as street resurfacing, but other items are new, such as the guardrail improvement, as well as the improvement of the intersection at Great Plain Avenue and Central Avenue. The Select Board unanimously requests adoption of Article 25. Thank you.
Fellow town meeting members, Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends appropriation for public works infrastructure, annual town meeting warrant, Article 25. This is an annual appropriation for public works infrastructure for improvements and repairs. This year, the improvements and repairs are in street resurfacing, sidewalks, roadway reconstruction, intersection improvements, storm drain capacity, and guardrails. The categories and the amounts in each category of improvements and repairs varies from year to year. For instance, your guardrails is a category, but has not been in the past. The total amount of the appropriation is $3,951,000 in free cash. This is the highest level of funding for public works infrastructure that we have seen. There is increased funding for sidewalks in this appropriation, and there are major projects included in -- for fiscal year '23, the design for the Mark Tree rehabilitation, as well as a design for intersection improvements at Great Plain Avenue and Central Street. These projects, once designed, will be appropriated in future years. Other public works infrastructure funding is embedded in a number of other articles, such as the Public Works Operating Budget, Chapter 90, funding for roads, other warrant articles, such as fleet replacement in the General Fund and Enterprise Fund, as well as the DPW complex feasibility study, and the various Enterprise Fund articles. Last year, the Finance Committee stated that fiscal year '22 would be a catch-up year and fiscal year 2023 a planning year. We see that with the design of two major projects in fiscal year 2023. The Finance Committee recommends adoption of Article 25, appropriate for public works infrastructure. Thank you, Mr. Moderator, fellow town meeting members.
Providing summary comments on behalf of the sponsors, which is the Select Board, Mr. Borelli.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator, town meeting members. Article 25 is an annual article that includes cash capital items for public works infrastructure. The amounts and descriptions of all the items can be found on Pages 43 and 44 of your warrant. They include work on our roads, drains, sidewalks, and guardrails. As a town, we have transitioned from funding these items from debt, and now the request is to fund them under this article with cash. Couple of highlights, there are design funds for Mark Tree Road. There's an intersection improvement at Central and Great Plain Avenue, as well as drainage on Concord and Burnside Projects. The Select Board unanimously recommends adoption of Article 25. Thank you, Ms. Moderator.
Thank you very much, Mr. Borelli. Providing summary comments on behalf of the Finance Committee, Ms. Louise Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, fellow town meeting members. The Finance Committee recommends adoption of Article 25, appropriate for public works infrastructure. As a Finance Committee member, and prior to that, as the Executive Secretary of the Finance Committee, I've been working on this article since 2006. This article is essential for the maintenance of our roads and our road systems that are attached to roads. It has taken years to develop this article to where it is now. It is an article with sound finances. Initially, this article, which was much smaller in value, was funded through debt. We were at a point where we were paying more in debt service, which is principal and interest, for the work that was being done than the value of the work on an annual basis. We now pay for this article through cash. The level of investment that the town is making at this point in public works infrastructure is getting closer to the level of investment that is necessary to maintain this infrastructure. We have come a really long way in the last few years. The structure of this article also allows flexibility to respond to the needs of public works, as well as to market conditions. We used to have a large number of articles, with each one of these projects in a separate article. By bringing them all together under a single umbrella, we have now given public works some flexibility to address the needs on an annual basis that are the greatest needs and to also deal with market conditions, so that contractual increases can be addressed and we can adjust on an annual basis for what we need to do. This article is the result of preparation and planning that takes place during the year. It is part of the town's capital improvement plan. The capital improvement plan is a five-year plan developed on an annual basis. Committees and departments create the list of their needs, both for the fiscal year that is coming up and in the longer term. That list is provided to the town manager and the finance director. They vet it. They create financing plans. The draft capital improvement plan is then submitted to the Board of Selectmen. The Board of Selectmen vet the plan. The final voted plan is then transmitted to the Finance Committee for the Finance Committee's review. The Board of Selectmen warrant articles are also transmitted to the Finance Committee, and we review the warrant articles from a financial perspective. After this process, this article comes before town meeting. With respect to Article 25, appropriate for public works infrastructure, the article has been vetted, and the Finance Committee stands before you today recommending adoption of the article because it is the most prudent fiscally and it meets the needs for infrastructure, public works infrastructure in the town of Needham. Thank you, fellow town meeting members. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Discussion of the main motion under Article 25. Ms. McKnight.
I'm not offering an amendment to this article, nor am I speaking against it, but I have questions regarding one of the categories of spending, and that is on storm drain capacity improvements. And I have three questions. And I'm not sure if perhaps they might be addressed to the town manager or to the -- one of the department heads, such as engineering or Department of Public Works, but I leave that to the sponsor, the Select Board. This description of storm drain capacity improvements refers to the Stormwater Master Plan. So I went to the town website... So I went to the town website to try to find the Stormwater Master Plan, and what I found, all I found was a reference in a March 2019 Request for Proposals Addendum for Commercial and Residential Growth Impact Study, saying the town's Stormwater Master Plan is dated, having been completed in 2000. Also, when the town adopted a Stormwater Bylaw in the fall, Special Town Meeting 2018, there was also reference to the 2000 Stormwater Master Plan. So my first question is, has there been an update to the 2000 Stormwater Master Plan that would be the source for determining, you know, how many like this should be spent? So that's, that's question one. And perhaps it was included in the Commercial and Residential Growth Impact Statement as a part of that, I mean, study, as a part of that study, but I'd really like to find out. Then, quite, my, my second question has to do with the statement in the explanation that since the issuance of the original master plan, I suppose that's the 2000 plan that's referred to, numerous multi-unit developments have been built in the town. These developments include new roads with drainage structures and roof or sump connections that had then connected to existing town systems. These new connections have increased the load on the town's drainage system and caused flooding in some areas. My question is, and I serve on the Planning Board, and I'm really aware of the, the new Stormwater Bylaw, and that was adopted under the federal Stormwater, National Pollution Discharge Elimination System, and the developments that the Planning Board reviews, and sub, both subdivisions and commercial and residential developments, we rely on the advice of our Town Engineering Department, our Department of Public Works, applying this Stormwater Bylaw to make sure that that doesn't happen. And structures are required, for example, to be put subsurface to catch storm water and to dispose of it slowly so that it does not flood other areas, and to take care of any pollution that might be involved in the stormwater. I, I would like to ask the question, the, it gives the impression that developments are causing this. Now that we have this bylaw, our Stormwater Bylaw, have we addressed this problem satisfactorily? And then, my third question is one I often ask, I think I've got a reputation for asking this. Who is going to benefit from this spending? I note that funding is targeted for Concord Street and Burnside Road. Now, maybe the, the owners of the residence or the residents of that road have been the victims of this situation, but possibly the developer of those roads was the one who caused it. But what I'm, where I'm getting at is, if particular areas of town are to benefit from this spending, should those particular areas not be assessed a betterment to pay for a portion of the cost of the improvement? So those are my three questions. The 2000 Master Plan, has there been an update? Have we adequately addressed this issue with our Article 7 of our general bylaws? And have we considered whether there are certain, certain areas that will benefit from this spending where there should be a betterment assessed rather than having the taxpayers pay generally for it? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McKnight. So I will, the, the sponsors are the Select Board, and we'll, we'll direct your three questions to the Select Board, and I recognize Mr. Borelli.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'll try to recall and answer them. I believe the first one, Mr. Moderator, is about the master plan, the 2000 master, sewer master plan. That is what drives our current projects, and we base it on that 2000 master plan. It's not been updated since 2000, but that is what we use that informs us how to move forward with the drainage improvements. Secondly, the Stormwater Bylaw that we did pass is going to help in address commercial properties and how they drain. They do have to comply with NIPDs, and they do have to keep drainage on-site, and we feel through this bylaw, it will improve the issues that we have seen in the past without the Stormwater Bylaw. Third, I believe is the, the betterment issue. Betterments can only be charged in localized situations. For example, if you have a neighborhood, and you decide as a neighborhood that there's a drainage project or a drainage issue, and the town comes out and takes care of that, the town can assess a betterment. On this issue right here, it's for the benefit of the entire town, and in that case, we cannot charge a betterment because it is affecting the entire town. Thank you, Ms. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Borelli. Discussion, Article 25. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Laura Dorfman, Precinct B. So I read this, and I thought at first, this is great, but what, when I read further and saw that it was focused on two particular areas, I got less enthusiastic because what we've seen in our neighborhood, and I'm sure we've all seen it around town, is a huge amount of teardowns of single-family properties, smaller properties, being replaced by much larger properties. Properties that encompass 3, 3,500 to 4,000 square feet, replacing homes that were 1,500 square feet, 2,000 square feet. In our own neighborhood alone, we have seven open building permits, there could be more. I'm talking about a radius of a fourth of a, of a mile. And our question has been to both the Public Works Department, to the Engineering Department, do you evaluate these individual projects on their own individually in terms of what the impact might have on flooding, which we have in our neighborhood? Or is anyone looking at this collectively? Because seven homes at one time is a lot different than one home every year. And we have a major flooding problem on our street, it's known, and we have over sewage, not sewage, but the drain systems get overloaded when there's a lot of rain, and so I'm worried not just about those two areas, which may or, and this multifamily issue, but there are pockets in town of individual homes in neighborhoods that are being taken down and rebuilt, that are going to further exacerbate these flooding issues that I know are not just Jermaine to Jarvis Circle. I'm sure there are other parts in town, given the high water table we have. So I'd like someone to address that, if they could, how, how these individual developments in, in the, in the high number of them and small amount of space are being addressed in terms of stormwater issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dorfman. To respond to the members' question, Mr. Borelli.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Prior to the passage of the Stormwater Bylaw, small developments or teardowns, reconstruction could actually drain onto the street. You've seen downspouts and gutters, and they go onto the street where it'd be captured by the town's drainage. Since the adoption of that bylaw, all new construction is required to have on-site drainage. It has to go back into the ground. The only exception to that is if there's, makes it impossible due to soil conditions to recharge into the ground. They need a special exemption from the Department of Public Works after consultation with the Building Department to be able to tie into the town's drain or find an alternative. But the bylaw was actually intended to address the issue that teardowns and reconstruction need to now recharge the stormwater back into the ground, it will not affect the town's drainage system. We understand, and this has been a problem since I've been on the board 10, 11 years, and even prior to that, that drainage in Needham and there are areas that really have had flooding, especially after large storms. We've addressed some of those, but the reason why we need this appropriation is to continue to address these areas as we move, as we move forward. Thank you, Ms. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Borelli. Discussion, Mr. Crocker.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator, Artie Crocker, Precinct I. I just wanted to mention something that was related to the stormwater. You know, whenever a house is torn down, wherever anything is going on, when there are trees removed, then there's, then there's more water that's going to try to infiltrate into the ground, when it's, that's not, that's not entirely what's supposed to happen. Part of what's supposed to happen is the trees are supposed to absorb the water, then by transpiration, I believe that's saying it correctly, is supposed to go back into the air. So we also have a problem related to our stormwater because more trees are being removed than really should be, and so we have to have some way of mitigation that, mitigate that, and hopefully that will be coming up in the next year. So that hopefully is part of a collective process within the town itself, is that will help with stormwater mitigation as well. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Crocker. Discussion. Yes, in the back.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Georgina Arieta, Rootneck, Precinct J. As a former crossing guard for the intersection of Great Plain and Central Avenue, I rise to thank the bodies that have put this on the budget. This is highly needed. However, my concern is that, I hope that the traffic mitigation study has really looked at traffic when the school is opened, because drop-off and pickup for Newman School severely impacts this particular intersection, and folks tend to bypass the traffic light at times during that time of day. So I just wanted to put that out there. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Discussion, the main motion under Article 25. Hearing none, we come to the vote. Under Article 25, Mr. Matthew Borelli moves to appropriate for Public Works Infrastructure. The amount of the appropriation, $3,951,000. The source is free cash. Therefore, a simple majority is required for passage. Text of the main motion is identical to Article 25 in your warrant. On the main motion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. The ayes have it, unanimous vote, the motion carries, and I declare Article 25 disposed of. The next order of business for you is Article 26. Under Article 26, Ms. Heidi Frail moves to appropriate for a library space utilization study. The amount of the appropriation is $60,000. The text of the main motion, identical to Article 26 in your warrant.
Mr. Moderator and fellow Town Meeting Members, Heidi Frail, speaking on behalf of the Select Board. Article 26 asks Town Meeting to vote to approve the sum of $60,000 for a space utilization study for the library. The study will engage a professional space planner to see if there's a layout that will better accommodate the large number of teenage students and tutors crowded into the few existing study rooms and areas by providing spaces for them, which will also make other parts of the building more efficient for other library patrons. Library staff will coordinate the study with the Building Design and Construction Department to utilize the town's existing expertise. The Select Board unanimously recommends adoption of Article 26.
Fellow Town Meeting Members, Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends adoption of annual Town Meeting Warrant Article 26, Library Space Utilization. The library renovation and addition was completed in March 2006. The library space is highly utilized by teens, and it has seen continuing increased use by teens. The goal of the study is to provide better space within the library to meet the needs of teens, and that would be both study space for teens as well as teen space. The $60,000 will be used to study improvement to the use of the space at the library. It will be focused on the current teen space, which is too small for the number of teens being served. It will look at other space, not just the current teen space, and it will also look at the study spaces currently available and other locations within the building where study spaces could be created. The Finance Committee recommends adoption of Article 26, Library Space Utilization Study. Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Town Meeting Members.
Providing the summary on behalf of the sponsors, which is the Select Board, Ms. Frail.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, fellow Town Meeting Members. Article 26 asks Town Meeting to appropriate $60,000 for the library space utilization study. The renovated library was opened in 2006, excuse me, 2006, and the needs of the community have changed somewhat since then. The study will enable the library, as you've heard, to engage a professional space planner to determine if the library's interior space can be better arranged to meet the evolving needs of our library patrons. The biggest need right now is an improved space for Needham students. After the pandemic, and since school has reopened, it's common for the library to welcome 50 to 60 teenagers each day after school, and there just isn't enough space dedicated to them to accommodate them. Tutors and other patrons are also utilizing the three study rooms, the Rose of Carols, and many of the four-seat tables. This study will provide options for an improved teen space and overall efficiency and usefulness of the layout throughout the building, and make the library work better for all of its patrons. As you've heard, this plan would include looking at the building systems, like the HVAC and lights, as well as space, just like the other studies we've mentioned, but also consideration about the use of space. For example, we've gone digital to a large degree. Do we still need all of the books? Could we use some of the space that's given to books now to convert to digital technology, and perhaps use some of that space for physical bodies of teenagers? The use of technology has changed, and a lot of people in our town really rely on the library for use of the technology. The library has also become a place to build community, and so we do need space for people in the library. The library staff will coordinate the study with the Building, the Design and Construction Department to utilize the town's existing expertise. The Select Board unanimously requests your approval on Article 26. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Frail, providing the summary comments on behalf of the Finance Committee, Ms. Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Town Meeting Members. It is now 15 years or so that the library has been open, and in the normal course of reviewing buildings, it is prudent to review the usage of the space. When this article was assigned to me, and I have been liaison to the library longer than to Public Works. So what, I went to visit the library, and what I saw were young people teeming in the library. And in speaking with the library director, she said, "Well, the high school is at the top of the hill, the library's at the bottom of the hill. Gravity just brings them in." So this study is to look at use of the interior space. It is not limited in terms of which interior space will be looked at. It is the entire library. It is to benefit those who are using the library, which is a public space, and by improving the teen space, which is the first space when you go in, the experience of other patrons will also be improved. This is an architectural study. We anticipate that at the end of the study, there will be multiple options for recommendations for what to do with the space. And one of the items of cost that does not often get discussed, but is a more significant item of cost when we have some of these smaller studies and projects, is attendance at meetings. The architects and designers need to attend a number of meetings because of the public nature of town government. Funding force for this article is free cash. The Finance Committee recommends adoption of this article. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you, Town Meeting Members.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Discussion of the main motion under Article 26. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm Rob Pettit, member of the Board of Trustees of the Needham Free Public Library and a Town Meeting Member from Precinct D. As others have said, it's hard to believe, but it's already been 16 years since the library reopened after significant renovation and addition. While the library facility still serves our town well, the role of the library has continued to evolve during the decade and a half since the renovation. to evolve during the decade and a half since the renovation. The space plan that we're looking at today will look at options for expanding the teen room and also for updating many other areas of the library, including the entrances and the reference desk area, to ensure that our community is getting as much value as possible out of the library. In arriving at the proposed cost for this study, the library considered costs incurred by peer libraries for similar space studies as well as costs for similarly sized town projects. If you compare the cost of this study to studies contained in some of the other warrants that we are voting on at this town meeting, I think you will find that the proposed expenditure is reasonable, given the scope of the study. We expect that the study will be conducted by a design and architecture firm, which would include conceptual work, design work, and cost estimating work to help ensure that we understand the value and the costs of any proposed changes to the library's space. The design phase will include public meetings and presentations and meetings with town and library officials. The design team would observe and research current library usage, interview stakeholders, and review peer libraries for best practices. In this way, the space study will help to ensure that any future changes to the library's space are well thought out and will deliver the maximum value to Needham residents. Our library continues to be an important institution in this town. Our usage following the end of curbside service has been extremely encouraging. Within three months of fully reopening, the library's circulation numbers exceeded pre-pandemic levels. Indeed, if you look back at circulation metrics, our library has seen more use per capita during the past decade than at any point since the late 1950s, when those records began. This space study will help to ensure that our physical space can evolve along with the library's evolving role in our community. I hope you can join me in approving this important study. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pettit. Discussion, the main motion under Article 26. Hearing none, we come to the vote. Under Article 26, Ms. Heidi Frail moves to appropriate for a library space utilization study. The sum is $60,000 to be transferred from free cash. The main motion is identical to Article 26 in your warrant. On the main motion, majority required for passage. All those in favor, please signify by saying "aye."
Aye.
Opposed by "nay." The ayes have it, unanimous vote. The motion carries, and I declare Article 26 disposed of. Next article is Article 27. Under Article 27, Mr. Kevin Keen moves to appropriate the sum of $60,000 for a DPW complex feasibility study. The source of the money is free cash, and the text of the warrant, excuse me, the text of the main motion is identical to Article 27 in your warrant.
Article 27, DPW Complex Feasibility Study. The DPW utilizes multiple facilities across the town to house the eight divisions, and two of these buildings, the DPW garage and the Daly Building, are past the end of their useful lives. As the town examines options to replace these buildings, it would be beneficial to examine the most efficient use of all DPW facilities. So this study would lead to a master plan to implement needed upgrades and eventually generate additional future capital improvement requests. This feasibility study requires Town Meeting to appropriate $60,000. The Select Board recommends adoption of this article. Thank you.
Fellow Town Meeting members, my name is Dick Riley. I'm a member of the Finance Committee, and I'm here today, this item, to discuss the DPW Complex Feasibility Study. As you are all aware, the town has a number of building projects under consideration. Many of these projects are high-profile projects supported by active constituencies. The reconstruction of the DPW facilities is a project that has been on the town's radar for some period of time. While some of the needs have been addressed with the construction of the Public Service Administration Building, the PSAB, and the Jack Cogswell Building, the overall project is far from complete. In particular, certain older buildings, such as the Daly Building and the DPW Garage, are well past their useful life. Funding of $60,000 for this study is proposed to come from free cash. The Finance Committee strongly supports this arguably overdue study and unanimously recommends adoption of Article 27. Thank you.
To speak on behalf of the proponents, the Select Board, Mr. Kevin Keen.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Department of Public Works utilizes nine sites across town to house its eight divisions. Two of the DPW buildings, the DPW garage and the Daly Building, are past the end of their useful lives and either need to be replaced or upgraded. But before we jump into simply replacing these facilities, it would be prudent to examine how all buildings and facilities across the town are being utilized. Needham is blessed in many ways, but we do not have one large site for this DPW operations. Balancing the needs of all the divisions is sort of like a giant Rubik's Cube. We want to get it right, and we want to achieve the greatest efficiency and functionality across all sites. This study would lead to a master plan and map out needed upgrades and generate incremental future additional capital improvement requests. The feasibility study requires Town Meeting, that's you, to appropriate $60,000. The Select Board recommends adoption of this article. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Keen. Speaking on behalf of the Finance Committee, Mr. Dick Riley.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Fellow Town Meeting members, I won't repeat what I recorded earlier, but in the course of this evening's discussion, it's been pointed out that we will have some challenging decisions facing us with respect to debt financing for the number of buildings that are being contemplated. Many of those buildings, understandably, are high-profile with strong constituencies behind them. It may not surprise anyone that the DPW probably doesn't have such a strong constituency. So I think it's very important, before we try to allocate the resources that we have, that we have a clear understanding of what the needs of the DPW are, and I think this study will help us make more informed decisions on the debt financing that we will all face. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. Discussion on the main motion under Article 27.
Mr. Dermody. No.
We try to reserve that for proponents in the Finance Committee, just so people don't get confused. You're speaking as a Town Meeting member, are you not, sir?
Yes.
Then you should be treated just like every other of your fellow Town Meeting members.
That's why I asked. Thank you, sir.
I mean, you're special, Mr. Dermody, but not that special.
Robert Dermody, Precinct G. Question for the proponents. We have multiple space studies proposed in different warrant articles. Is it ever possible to potentially hire a single firm to do more than one study? Has the town ever done that? Has that ever been considered? Might there be some savings or benefits involved in that? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dermody. Thank you for being good sport. Question for the proponents. Mr. Keen, to respond to the member's question.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. It's a good question, but all studies go out and are out to bid, and there are different specialists who study different aspects of development and space use. So I think maybe we just have to keep it out to specific, individual bids. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Keen. Discussion. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Doug Fox, Precinct F. I just want to urge this study and all studies around space in town that we continue to consider and study the use of hybrid and remote work. I see a lot of workstations in those facilities. It's definitely an old-school management style, it seems like, in town of wanting people to be in these workstations where you can watch them, but as you recruit new people into those roles, it's going to be harder to get them. We're going to have to pay them more, so I really hope, as we're investing in this space, we're studying that hard. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Discussion. Article 27, the main motion. Yes, sir.
Stephen Frail, Precinct G. I have a question about the interaction between this study and the Article 7 that just already passed around the RTS service delivery. Is there an order of operations? Does the results of the RTS service delivery study potentially change the DPW needs, and has that been worked out?
Thank you, Mr. Frail. Certainly a question for the proponents. Mr. Frail asks about the interrelationship, if any, between the RTS service delivery study and this feasibility study for the DPW complex. Mr. Keen, for the purpose of responding to the member's question.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This question was anticipated, and it's a good question. Thank you. The two studies could be concurrent. The DPW study is looking specifically at two buildings as it starts. The RTS is sort of, I believe, a shorter study. The feeling is that two studies could probably work together, and the town can walk and chew gum at the same time and manage them. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Keen. Discussion, Article 27. Hearing none, we come to the vote. Under Article 27, Mr. Kevin Keen moves for the appropriation of the sum of $60,000 for a DPW complex feasibility study. The source is free cash. The main motion is identical to Article 27 appearing in your warrant. On the main motion, all those in favor, please signify by saying "aye."
Aye.
Opposed by "nay." The ayes have it, unanimous vote. The motion carries, and I declare Article 27 disposed of. We will take a brief five-to-seven-minute recess, but at seven minutes, we're going to come back. Thanks very much. I call back to order our annual town meeting. Sorry, I lost my phone for a second. I'm expecting a call. Ladies and gentlemen, tonight's attendance, 217 present, 36 absent, according to the records of the town clerk. The next item up for your consideration is Article 31. Under Article 31, Mr. Marcus Nelson moves that the town appropriate to the Athletic Facility Improvement Fund. The text of the main motion under Article 31 is identical to the article appearing in your warrant.
Hello, Mr. Moderator and fellow Town Meeting members. The primary reason for the establishment of this reserve fund is to have monies available to replace the artificial turf fields at Defazio and Memorial Parks when their useful life of 10 to 12 years is over. However, the fund does allow for expenditures on any athletic facility, and in fact, funds from this reserve account were used to help pay for the new Memorial Park Fieldhouse. We replaced the turf fields at the two parks two years ago at a cost of about $1.8 million. Those fields were installed in 2009 and lasted 11 years. Therefore, we anticipate we will need funding of about $2 million in 2031 or 2032. We currently have just over $976,000 in the fund, and we'll need to average about $100,000 in annual appropriations to this fund over the next 10 years to reach our goal. The main motion of this article would appropriate $33,533 to this fund. An amendment will be offered by the Select Board at the request of the Finance Committee to add an additional $52,126 to this fund using free cash. The Finance Committee believes it is prudent to appropriate the amended amount of $85,659 and unanimously recommends adoption of the main motion and the amendment to Article 31. Thank you.
Mr. Nelson also offers a motion to amend. That motion to amend reads as follows. Moved that the main motion under Article 31 be amended by deleting in the first line the sum $33,533 and inserting in place thereof the sum $85,659, and by deleting in the fourth line the quote "said sum" close quote and inserting in place thereof the words $52,126 to be transferred from free cash and $33,533. That is the main motion and the motion to amend. Both will be placed on the floor for your consideration. Speaking on behalf of the sponsors, the Select Board, Ms. Mary Ann Cooley, the Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Town Meeting members. I am pinch-hitting tonight to stay in line with the athletic theme here. So there is a motion to amend this particular article. It rose after the warrant was printed, but following discussion and consultation between the Select Board and the FinCom, so there was a decision to propose for your consideration adding the additional free cash to this particular warrant article. You will recall that this Athletic Facility Improvement Fund is a fund that we put money in from time to time. It has a target balance of $2 million. We're around $1 million, just underneath $1 million there now, and traditionally, the town has used this as a vehicle for saving up for the purposes of, you know, whenever the turf field needs to be redone. So we've used it for that purpose. It could be used more broadly. It's also been used for Memorial Field. It could be used for tennis as a vehicle for saving for the renewal of tennis courts. If we were to do so, we would probably go back and look at what the target balance should be, and in fact, one of the items that's likely to be on the Select Board goals this year is in fact to look at all these target balances of the various funds. So with that, for your consideration, we, the Select Board, respectfully ask for your adoption of Article 31.
Thank you, Ms. Cooley. Speaking on behalf of the Finance Committee to the main motion and the motion to amend, providing summary comments, Mr. Tom Jacob, member of the committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Hello, fellow Town Meeting members. As Ms. Cooley said, the primary reason for the establishment of the reserve fund, of this reserve fund, is to have monies available to replace the artificial turf fields at Defazio and Memorial Parks when their useful life expires in the 10- to 12-year range. However, the fund does allow for expenditures of any athletic facility, and in fact, funds for this reserve account were used to help pay for the new Memorial Park Fieldhouse. We replaced the turf fields at the two parks two years ago at a cost of about $1.8 million. Those fields were installed in 2009 and lasted 11 years. Therefore, we anticipate that we will be needing to fund about $2 million in 2031, 2032. We currently have just over $976,000 in the fund, and we'll need to average about $100,000 a year in the annual appropriations for this fund to reach the goal in 10 years. That assumes no other facilities would be added, as Ms. Cooley said. If things change, we would be looking to add more funds. To hit that target, however, to hit that target, this year, we are looking to, in the main motion, we have $33,533 being requested for the fund and the amendment of an additional $52,126 for a total of $85,659. The Finance Committee believes it is prudent to appropriate this amended amount and unanimously recommends adoption of the main motion and the amendment of Article 31. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jacob. Discussion on the main motion under Article 31 and the motion to amend. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Carol Urwitz, Precinct J. I just would like to preface my comments by saying both kids were in athletics. My son was on the football team, so I'm not anti-athletic. But I think that one is the free cash of $52,000. One question I have is can we defer using that for our fall meeting till we study the other areas? There have been so many areas that have come up this town meeting that need extra funds. One of them is downtown, the ice and snow where we're, you know, changing the requirements and the penalties. We might consider the town clearing it up so that we can promote the use of our town in...
in bad winter weather, because I know, I know I'm getting off track. I'll make this really fast. I got a ticket once because I could not get up the ice mound to put money in the meter, so I was ticketed. It would really be great if we could clear up downtown during the winter. So, I vote to not add the additional funds and as with other needs of the community as a whole, when needs arise, we then vote to increase funding for the area rather than, you know, build up a fund for one specific area without considering the others.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Erwitz. I'm going to ask the Finance Committee to respond to the member's question about whether or not free cash could be voted down here and still be available for appropriation during the fiscal year at a special town meeting. Mr. Jacob?
The issue with the free cash is that it is certified, be certified after the fiscal year, and this free cash is available only through the end of June. So, the free cash, there will not be a free cash number certified by fall, so there won't be available free cash for us to allocate.
Thank you, Mr. Jacob. Discussion on Article 31 and the motion to amend. Yes, sir, in the back?
Michael Nyden, Precinct D. I just have an observation. We're proposing $82,000 for athletic facilities. However, earlier, we voted on line item 31, page 21, $8,300 for the Needham Council for Arts and Culture. $8,300. Just a note.
Thank you, Mr. Nyden. Discussion under Article 31, the main motion.
Holly Clark, Precinct D. Is there any place else to put these funds that it would remain or would be available after June 30th? What happens to it if we don't appropriate it?
Finance Committee will respond to your question, Ms. Clark. Mr. Levy?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. As Mr. Jacob noted, in order for the town to be able to appropriate free cash, it has to first be certified by the state. This past year, the certification did not happen until January, so if that timeline is similar, it wouldn't be available at the October town meeting. The only alternative which the Finance Committee did consider is that free cash could be put into a stabilization fund such as this one at this point so that it could be appropriated in the fall out of that same stabilization fund. This is the only stabilization fund that is on the warrant. There are other stabilization funds such as the Debt Service Stabilization Fund, Capital Facility Stabilization Fund, but at this town meeting, we're not able to put money into that because it is not on the warrant for our consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Levy. Discussion?
Ms. Clark, are you not done? No, I wasn't. I would just like-
I'm sorry, what?
If I could, having been given that information, I would just like to make a comment.
Sure.
Okay. Which is that, we just kind of went through here to say that town meeting was going to respect the budget process, and this is the first I'm hearing about the idea of adding this amount to this line item. And maybe it's the right thing to do and maybe it's what we're going to decide to do, but there have been a number of other concerns that have been raised here that money could solve if it went through the vetting process. So, if we do this, I would hope next year, we would remember that we did it and then perhaps this item gets less money next year so that the other needs can be met. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Ms. Clark.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I am Andrea Longo Carter, town meeting member from Precinct C. I rise in support of the main motion but against the amendment. I appreciate what Mr. Jacob said, that we would need to replenish this at about $100,000 a year to meet the goal that we have to be able to replace the turf funds at the anticipated cost at the anticipated time, but given what Mr. Levy just said, I'm not in favor of increasing the appropriation solely because this was the only item, this was the only stabilization fund that was in the warrant. I think that there are lots of stabilization funds that we have created and that we appropriate to, and I would like to have had the choice to decide among them as opposed to the only one that was in the warrant. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Longo Carter. Discussion under the main motion, the motion to amend. Hearing none, we come to the vote. Under Article 31, Mr. Marcus Nelson moves to appropriate to Athletic Facility Improvement Fund. We deal with the motion to amend first. As a motion to amend, it requires a simple majority for passage. The motion to amend was previously read to town meeting by the moderator. On the motion to amend, majority required for passage. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? I'll try that on a voice vote one more time. On the motion to amend, majority required for passage. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay?
Nay.
All right. Well, chairs in doubt, and I'm going to have to ask the tellers to come forward as long Now I've lost my phone again. What the heck, Teddy? Here it is. Are the tellers in position? Ladies and gentlemen, everyone on the floor, everyone seated on the floor must be a town meeting member. So, I want to make sure that's the case. If you're not seated on the floor, your vote will not be counted. Tellers count only those seated on the floor. So, the question before you for a vote is the motion to amend under Article 31. Under Article 31, for the motion to amend, all those in favor, please signify by raising The count appears to be complete. Is that right? Very well. Please put your hands down, ladies and gentlemen. On the motion to amend, the main motion under Article 31, all those opposed, please signify Count appears to be complete. Is that correct, tellers? Excellent. Thank you. I'll call for the report now. Mr. Barzalai? The ayes, please.
Nine.
Nine. And the nays?
Zero.
Zero. Ms. Wolf? The ayes, please.
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three. And the nays?
Thirteen.
Thirteen. Ms. Han? The ayes, please.
Five.
Five. And the nays?
Zero.
Zero. Ms. Young? The ayes, please.
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine. And the nays?
Fifteen.
Fifteen. Mr. Brinkhaus? The ayes, please.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six. And the nays?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six. Ms. Callanan? The ayes, please.
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four. And the nays?
Ten.
Ten. Thank you, tellers, for your service. Just a moment, ladies and gentlemen, while the town clerk and I tally and compare our A vote having been taken by a show of hands, 136 in the affirmative, 64 in the negative, the motion to amend carries. This brings us to the main motion as amended under Article 31. Mr. Marcus Nelson moves to appropriate to the Athletic Facility Improvement Fund. But for the amendment you just enacted, the text of the main motion is identical to Article 31 in your warrant. This is an appropriation to a stabilization fund, and sometimes people ask about the quantum of vote associated with a stabilization fund. It's a statutory creation. And the way it works, under Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 40, Section 5B, which is cited here, is that it is a majority vote to place funds into a stabilization fund, but it requires a two-thirds vote of this body to appropriate funds from a stabilization fund. So, just a little fun fact. Here, we are voting and seeking a majority for passage. On the main motion under Article 31, as amended, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay?
Nay.
The ayes have it, majority declared on a voice vote. The motion carries and I declare Article 31 disposed of. This brings us to Article 32. Under Article 32, Mr. Kevin Keen moves to appropriate to the Workers' Compensation Fund. The amount of the appropriation is $130,000, and the text of the main motion is identical to Article 32 in your warrant.
Article 32, Workers' Compensation Fund. The balance of the Workers' Compensation Fund is $1,012,986 and is running low. Usually, this account is funded annually by any remaining balance in the employee benefits budget, but over the past decade, increased salaries, expenses, and the resolution of several longstanding cases has diminished the fund. It's up to you, town meeting members, to replenish it with an appropriation of $130,000. The Workers' Compensation Fund is a town's reserve for paying workers' compensation claims of prior years and for lump sum settlements up to the limit of the town's reinsurance limits. The fund applies to both school employees and general government employees. The Select Board unanimously recommends adoption of this article. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator and fellow town meeting members. This is Article 32, appropriate to the Workers' Compensation Fund. The Workers' Compensation Fund is the town fund utilized for paying workers' compensation claims from the prior year and for workers' compensation settlements up to the town's stop-loss insurance policy claims. The target for this fund balance has been $1.2 million, but balances have been declining recently due to salary and expense increases as well as certain case resolutions. To restore the balance of this fund to a more appropriate level, the Select Board seeks to recommend that $130,000 be appropriated from free cash and transferred to the Workers' Compensation Fund. The Finance Committee unanimously recommends approval of Article 32, appropriate for the Workers' Compensation Fund. Thank you, Mr. Moderator and fellow town meeting members.
Speaking in a summary way, for the proponents, the Select Board, Mr. Kevin Keen.
Thank you, Mrs. Moderator. We got a slide up there, too. That also has information about Article 33, so that's a spoiler alert. Don't look at it unless you don't want to know. The town workers' compensation reserve account is funded annually by any remaining balance in the employee benefits budget. It covers school department and general government employees, but it's getting low. The fund's balance has been declining over the past decade due to increases in salaries, expenses, and the resolution of several longstanding cases. The balance of the fund is $1,012,986, and it's up to you to replenish it with $130,000 from free cash. That would be sufficient. The Select Board recommends adoption of this article. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Keen. And speaking on behalf of the Finance Committee on Article 32, Ms. Carol Faschetti, member of the Finance Committee.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, fellow town meeting members. My name is Carol Faschetti, and this is Article 32. Honestly, Kevin Keen did an excellent job, and thank you for the chart. As he said, the Workers' Compensation Fund is utilized to pay workers' compensation claims from the prior year and to settle up workers' compensation settlements that are up to the stop-loss insurance policy claims. So, the target for this fund balance is $1.2 million, and as Kevin said, it's getting low, and we'd like to restore it back to the $1.2 million. So, we are recommending that $130,000 be appropriated from free cash and transferred to the Workers' Compensation Fund. The Finance Committee unanimously recommends adoption of Article 32. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Faschetti. Discussion of the main motion under Article 32. Hearing none, we come to the vote. Under Article 32, Mr. Kevin Keen moves to appropriate to the Workers' Compensation Fund. The text of the main motion is identical to Article 32 in your warrant. The amount of the appropriation, $130,000 from free cash. The majority is required for passage. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? The ayes have it, majority declared on a voice vote. The motion carries and I declare Article 32 disposed of. This brings us to Article 33. Under Article 33, Mr. Kevin Keen moves to appropriate to the Public Safety Injury on Duty Fund. The amount of the appropriation, $300,000. The source is free cash.
Article 33, Public Safety Injury on Duty Fund. The purpose of the Injury on Duty Fund, IOD, is to reserve monies for payment of injury, leave, compensation, and medical bills for public safety personnel who are not otherwise eligible for workers' compensation. The fund was approved at a special town meeting, and it's up to you to approve the proposed $300,000. It is up to you to approve the proposed $300,000, which would be the first appropriation to the new fund. The select board unanimously recommends adoption of this article. Thank you.
Article 33, Appropriate to Public Safety Injury on Duty Fund. Good evening, Mr. Moderator and fellow town meeting members. Public Safety Injury on Duty Fund is a newly created fund that was provided for in the 2016 Municipal Modernization Act. This permits cities and towns such as Needham to establish an appropriate funds to a special injury leave indemnity fund for payment of injury leave compensation and medical bills incurred specifically for public safety personnel. This fund is essentially similar to the uses of the Workers' Compensation Fund discussed in Article 32 for public safety employees that do not qualify for workers' compensation. The fund can be used to pay for legal and medical expenses, but any lost wages that are paid out must come from the operating budget. The request for this appropriation is $300,000 to be transferred from free cash. Since this is a brand-new fund, the town is working with a third party to estimate what the potential exposure could be and to assess what the target fund size should be over time. The town's Director of Finance will report back to the Finance Committee on the analysis and establish a target level for this fund. Mr. Moderator and fellow town meeting members, the Finance Committee unanimously recommends adoption of Article 33, appropriate the sum of $300,000 to the Public Safety Injury on Duty Fund. Thank you very much.
Speaking to the main motion under Article 33, Mr. Keane, member of the Select Board.
Thank you, Mrs. Moderator. Town meeting members. While the Workers' Compensation Fund from Article 32 covers town and school employees, Article 33, this article, covers public safety personnel who are not eligible for worker compensation. So we now have a separate operating line and reserve fund for this. This account would reserve monies for IOD, injured-on-duty payments, such as leave compensation and medical bills. This is a new fund, and it's up to you to approve the proposed allocation of $300,000, the first appropriation to this new fund. Reserve funds in this would carry from year to year if they're not expended, and the select board recommends adoption of this article. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Keane. And providing the summary comments for the Finance Committee, again, Ms. Faschetti.
Hello, and once again, Mr. Keane has done a wonderful job of explaining this article. But I would like to stress that this is a brand-new fund, and we don't have as history on what the appropriate level of this fund should be. We have... are utilizing a third party to help us assess that. And the town finance director and town manager will be reporting back to the Finance Committee on the adequacies of the appropriations and the appropriate level of the fund. But at this point, the Finance Committee unanimously recommends adoption of Article 33, appropriate the sum of $300,000 to the Public Safety Injury on Duty Fund. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Faschetti. Discussion under Article 33. Hearing none, we come to the vote. Under Article 33, Mr. Kevin Keane moves to appropriate to the Public Safety Injury on Duty Fund. The amount is $300,000. The source is free cash. A majority is required for passage. On the main motion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? The ayes have it, the motion carries, and I declare Article 33 disposed of. How come we don't get interesting ones like Nantucket had the other day? I want to preside over that debate. I think that'd be fun. I'm not encouraging anyone. I'm not encouraging. All right, sorry. I shouldn't opine. Stormwater is just as exciting as that article, let me tell you. It's not a problem. All right, now we go back to work. The next item for your consideration put on the floor is Article 34. Amend the general bylaws, snow and ice on sidewalks. This Article 34 is offered by Mr. Matthew Borelli. It is sponsored by the Select Board. The text of the main motion is identical to Article 34 in your warrant.
Thank you, Mrs. Moderator, town meeting members. Article 34 will amend our general bylaw to allow greater enforcement of snow and ice removal on sidewalks for commercial businesses. Currently, the bylaw does include commercial businesses, but is unclear to what groups and categories that includes. This bylaw will allow greater enforcement because it will spell out exactly what businesses are covered and allow the town to enforce the action of snow removal and ice removal from those sidewalks. The description of those included commercial businesses are in the article itself under 3.1.8.2. The Select Board unanimously recommends adoption of this article. Thank you.
Fellow town meeting members, I am Barry Kaufman, a member of the Needham Finance Committee. I am speaking to Article 34, amend general bylaws, snow and ice on sidewalks. As stated in the warrant, Article 34 more clearly defines an existing bylaw giving the town the ability to find any commercial establishment or property that is open to the public for not removing snow and ice on a timely basis. It does expand the requirement to buildings with three or more dwelling units within the business district. The fines are limited to no more than $50 per offense. Historically, the town has not collected any fines, but has simply issued warnings, and the intent here is to get more consistent compliance from all businesses. The Finance Committee unanimously recommends adoption of Article 34. Thank you.
I recognize Mr. Borelli to speak on behalf of the sponsors.
Thank you, Mrs. Moderator, town meeting members. Article 34 will allow the town to enforce snow and ice removal in commercial places, hospital or medical establishment, places of worship, multifamily housing, and other establishments as defined in the description that are open to the public. We have heard concerns from residents over many years about the inconsistent snow removal after storm. And this article intends to rectify the issue by making it mandatory to remove snow under these conditions. Right now, the bylaw, we feel, is unclear on which establishments are covered, and this will codify that. The Select Board unanimously recommends adoption of Article 34. Thank you, Mrs. Moderator.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Borelli. Providing summary comments about the Finance Committee, Mr. Barry Kaufman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and good evening, fellow town meeting members. Although the $50 fine proposed in this article is somewhat de minimis and is likely, not likely to result in significant revenues, the Finance Committee did feel it would have a positive impact. But more importantly, this article obviously clarifies the existing bylaw to encompass all commercial buildings and clarified a lot of the language that was unclear in the existing bylaw. And as a result, the Finance Committee unanimously endorses adoption of this article. Thank you, Ms. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Kaufman. Discussion on the main motion under Article 34. Ms. McKnight.
Jeanne McKnight, Precinct F. I'm having a hard time deciding how to vote on this article. And the answer to the question that I'll pose at the end of my comments may help me to make up my mind. I asked a question earlier in this Monday night on the line item, snow and ice removal, about the town's pilot project to clear sidewalks in the town center and what was the result of that. And Select Board Member Mary Ann Cooley said that that project is about to be evaluated. I was very hopeful that that would be a start to the town plowing more of its sidewalks, particularly the sidewalks that are a walk-to-train. As the sidewalk that abuts the property where I live, the Rosemary Ridge condominium on Hillside Avenue, where one would walk uphill to the train, downhill from the train. And there's a considerable length of sidewalk that, per this article, our condominium would be obliged to plow. The town should be plowing these sidewalks. This is town property. The town plies sidewalks only in the area that it defines as a walk to school. They should be plowing sidewalks that are walk-to-train, walk to the senior center, walk to the heights. They should not be relying on private parties to bear this burden. Nevertheless, as a member of the Board of Trustees of our condominium, an elected member of the Board of Trustees of the condominium, knowing how dangerous it is to walk in Hillside Avenue when the sidewalks are covered with snow. Hillside Avenue is too narrow to begin with. You have people walking up to the train in the street, walking home in the dark in the street. It needs to be plowed. And I said, couldn't we, you know, take it upon ourselves to plow the part in front of our building? And the response I got from our building management company's representative is that there would be liability involved in doing that. As, you know, as good a job as we might try to do, a person might still slip or fall. Particularly, you know, it's hilly. There's, I mean, you plow an area, and it could melt and then freeze again before you had an opportunity to clear it again. I was told we just can't do that. There's liability. Now, that's the most important issue to me. But also, I just want to make you aware that this is burdensome. Our condominium will have to purchase a new sidewalk plow to be able to comply with this obligation. So, the question I have, and I don't know if the Select Board would be willing to have town council address it, is will there be liability for us, essentially the owners of the 105 units at the Rosemary Ridge condominium, if despite our best efforts, somebody slips and falls and sues us? Who is responsible? It's town property. They're putting the burden on us to plow it. What will happen?
Well, you're going to have to pay for that opinion, Ms. McKnight. Lawyers don't give opinions for nothing. I mean... They have to make a living, you know, Ms. McKnight. I mean...
If anybody knows that, it's you.
I think you know that just as well as I. Certainly, happy to put that question to the sponsors that may have the advice of town council or at least can opine in a way that hopefully is responsive. Mr. Borelli, to respond to the member's question.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. Yes, we did look into this issue. So just in a two-pronged way, there is currently a statute that the town would not be liable if someone had a slip and fall or an accident on the public way. We are exempt under that statute. Now, as far as a private party, if they created a hazard by their snow removal, then they would possibly be subject to a liability for that, for not doing it correctly. Thank you, Ms. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Borelli. Further discussion, Mr. Alpert.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Paul Alpert, Precinct C. Mr. Moderator, I am troubled by the fine being not more than $50. I don't recall seeing that elsewhere in our fines. We usually have a set amount of money. I'm looking at Article 35, where we have set amounts of money for each offense. I move that we amend in Section 3.1.8.1 by striking the words "not more than" and in 3.1.8.2, striking the words "not more than", so that the fine is $50. I don't know who's going to determine whether the fine is $10 or $30 or $50 and how they're going to determine whether the fine is $10 or $30 or $50. So let's make it a $50 fine. Thank you, Ms. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Alpert. Mr. Alpert moves to amend the main motion under Article 34 in two ways. First, in Section 3.1.8.1, to remove the words "not more than". Similarly, in Section 3.1.8.2, to remove the words "not more than" that precede $50. Mr. Alpert's motion to amend is properly placed on the floor, and discussion will continue on the main motion and the motion to amend. Discussion. Yes, ma'am.
Andrea Weiser, Precinct E. I guess I rise just to one question, whether this amendment will be enforced. It's my understanding that private parties have always had... There's always been on the books, or not always, but for a long time, a fine for putting snow on the sidewalks or public ways. Yet you walk down the sidewalks that are plowed by the town because, as Ms. McKnight said, they're on the school routes. And people have paid someone to plow their driveway, and the plows come and leave their little snow hedgerows on the sidewalk. So now you can't walk down the sidewalk. And it happens time and time again in a storm. So are we going to enforce this bylaw and make our sidewalks safer overall and make a more walkable town?
Thank you, Ms. Weiser. I'll put that question to the sponsors and the executive branch, the Select Board. Mr. Borelli, to respond to the member's question regarding enforcement.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Could I just address also the "not more than" language, Ms. Moderator, that was proposed in the amendment?
Yes.
Thank you. Perfect. Thank you. Great. Okay, so to the member's question, so this would only affect commercial properties. The residential properties, we do not have a current bylaw or are not looking for a bylaw for that. But as a town, we are looking at ways, instead of finding people, to try to get PSA or other ways to get them, so this does not happen and making Needham a much more walkable streets and neighborhoods. We are aware of that issue. Under this bylaw, we're looking to address the commercial issue first because there's already bylaw on the books. We just feel it has not been clear. And as far as the $50 fine, the existing bylaw says not more than $50. And that's where we took the text from. I'm not weighing in one way or another. We support the amendment. But that is where the language came from, the existing bylaw. Thank you, Ms. Moderator.
Yep, Mr. Borelli, let me just, maybe, I don't know, Mr. Weiser, I'll get back to you. But I think, Ms. Weiser, is there a plan for enforcement? Like, will there be enforcement of the bylaw? I think it's one of the...
Of this existing bylaw? Yes. The reason that we're putting this into place and codifying the language is so that we can enforce without question if there is a violation.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator.
You're welcome. Ms. Weiser, did you want to speak?
So I guess I'm just curious, in 3.1.8.1, it doesn't, it says "any person who places snow". Isn't that all of us? We all live here.
Mr. Borelli.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. I apologize. I thought you were referring to the 3.1.8.2. Yes, it is illegal in the town of Needham to put snow on sidewalks, push them across the street, or create, you know, any barrier for the sidewalk. So it is our intent to look at that and to enforce this bylaw now that we're codifying it through town meeting, if it passes. Thank you, Ms. Moderator.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Borelli. Discussion. Mr. Escalante.
David Escalante, Precinct I. I appreciate the discussion, and I think we need to do something about the snow removal. I had, I intend to vote against this because of the way 3.1... I intend to vote against this because of the way 3.1.8.1 is worded. I think 3.1.8.2 is long and thoughtful and has lots of clauses and reasonableness. And, well, if you can't remove it because it's difficult to remove, you can do something else. And 3.1... 3.8.1 is directly targeted at persons. It doesn't mention any of the other parties, such as boards or agents or trusts in the other one. It doesn't clarify whether a person who works for an agent, board, trust, or whoever could in fact be charged under it as opposed to 8.2. It doesn't clarify, in terms of something somebody else asked, whether a person who's driving a snow pushing device for the town could be individually charged as a person, even though the town might not be liable under some state law. And while we may clarify all of this in the course of some sort of a Q and A in this meeting, which I'm fine with, I don't think, since we're voting to amend the bylaws of the town, which will stand for years and years and years, that I'm comfortable voting for this as it stands written and leaving the interpretation of "person" and placing snow on a sidewalk or a street as written, you know, for the next 10, 20, however many years the bylaws are gonna stand. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Escalante. Mr. Borelli.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Just to clarify, 3.1.8.1, the language under that, although it's been renumbered to fit to be able to put 3.1.8.2. 3.1.8.1, that was just spoke about with the member. That's already existing language in the bylaw. So, that language is currently verbatim. We added the 3.1.8.2 to clarify that language, and then there was a renumbering. Thank you, Ms. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Borelli. Discussion. Ms. McKnight, you have one minute remaining under this article.
Yes. This will be clear, because just to clarify something that keeps being said over and over again, and that is that there's an ambiguity in the current bylaw. With regard to all residential property, there is no ambiguity in the current bylaw. All residential property, whether single-family, two-family, or multifamily, has no obligation under the current bylaw to plow snow in front of their property. This introduces a new burden upon multifamily housing containing three or more dwelling units.
Thank you, Ms. McKnight. Discussion. Yes, in the back, on the left?
Cindy Casella, Contrary, Precinct D. I was on the school safety study committee, and I was given the assignment to do a survey on snow removal because back then, there was ambiguity, who was responsible for removing the snow around schools. So, we came up with a plan to buy more bombardier plows for the sidewalk, which cost the town a bit of money, and to radiate out from the schools outward so that the schools would be clear. And the hospital radiate out from there and the downtown. And I'm wondering, are we going away from removing snows... The town going away from removing snow from the downtown and trying to do less snow removal? I also was wondering if they're maintaining the number of bombardiers that we had bought. Like, they're probably getting old now, like I am. And I was just wondering, are they gonna keep the number that we ended up buying?
Thank you, Ms. Contrary. Well, I'll put those questions to the sponsors, and we'll try to get you some answers. Two questions from the member. One has to do with whether or not there's any evidence or any plan to move away from more comprehensive snow removal downtown. And the second has to do with the number of sidewalk plows. Mr. Borelli.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The town piloted a downtown program, but under the existing bylaw, it was never the town's responsibility to clear the downtown prior to that or clear commercial routes. That has always been the responsibility, as long as this bylaw's been into effect, for the businesses. This clarifies who is responsible because it was ambiguous on what commercial properties actually meant. So, we are not moving away from any downtown plowing. There was really no commercial plowing that the town did, except for that pilot. In fact, we clear 54 miles of sidewalk radiating away from the schools. It's our intention to actually buy more equipment for those routes as we try to clear it more efficiently. Thank you, Ms. Moderator.
And sorry, Mr. Borelli. Just the second part of the member's question was just the number of sidewalk plows or the fleet that exists.
Okay. Let me see if I can get you the exact number of plows.
Mr. Borelli.
Ms. Moderator, the answer is eight. And we, again, we intend to increase that number. Thank you, Ms. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Borelli. Discussion. Yes, sir, in the back.
Eric Pressman, District B. Not to confuse with Aaron Pressman. I'm just curious. Does this do anything? It seems to me that these fines are going to be less than hiring someone to take care of the problem and plow. So, are we doing anything with any of this? Is it just... Are we just putting words on paper that, you know, I'm not gonna still plow? It's gonna cost me more not to plow.
Very well, Mr. Pressman. Question about the... The question about the thought behind incentives and disincentives with the monetary fine. Mr. Borelli, speaking to the member's question.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. We receive a lot of complaints on this issue from commercial... People are trying to go to commercial properties and have issues. The $50 fine would be by offense. So, I don't know as far as, you know, the disincentive of keep getting fines that rack up over time. But we hope it is enough to have a disincentive for that to happen. And again, currently, we're using the amount that was set up to at the time, $50 per offense. We think, hopefully, this is enough to make sure that people do take care of their sidewalks in front of the commercial establishments.
Hello. Mr. Peckham, a town meeting member from Precinct D, moves the question. And I think by now you all know what that means. So, we will query the body and see if there's a two-thirds vote that would terminate discussion and debate and bring it to an immediate vote, or if you prefer to continue discussion on the main motion under Article 34 and the amendment. And Mr. Peckham, I should clarify that... Does your motion apply to the amendment as well?
Yes, sir.
Yes, he does. Okay. So, on the motion, the previous question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay?
Nay.
The ayes have it. Two-thirds vote declared on a voice vote. The motion carries. That brings to an immediate vote the two matters for your attention. The first is a motion to amend. Mr. Paul Alpert moves to amend the main motion under Article 34 by deleting in Section 3.1.8.1 the words "not more than". Similarly, he moves, under that same motion, to delete the words "not more than", which precede $50 and appear in Section 3.1.8.2. The effect of that amendment, as you can tell, would be not to have any discretion. It would simply be a $50 fine, flat fine. So, first, on the motion to amend, and some majority required for passage. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay?
Nay.
The ayes have it. Majority vote declared on a voice vote. The motion carries. The amendment is adopted. This brings us to the main motion under Article 34. Mr. Matthew Borelli moves to amend the general bylaws relating to snow and ice on sidewalks. The main motion has been amended by your action but is otherwise identical to Article 34 in your warrant. On the main motion as amended, a majority required for passage. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? I'm sorry. Maybe it's... Maybe it's me. But I'm gonna ask you to just do that one more time for me, please. So, on the main motion as amended, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay?
Nay.
The ayes have it. Majority declared on a voice vote. The motion carries. And I declare Article 34 disposed of. This brings us to Article 35. Under Article 35, Mr. Matthew Borelli moves to amend the general bylaws "household refuse". That's what it says. Under the... The main motion is identical to Article 35 in your warrant.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator, town meeting members. Article 35 will make it a violation if someone places household trash in a town receptacle. We have noticed an uptick of this occurring over the past couple of years, and there is currently no mechanism to enforce this from not happening. This will allow the town to have that mechanism. The Select Board unanimously requests adoption of Article 35. Thank you.
Well, Mr. Moderator and fellow town meeting members. As explained in the warrant and by Mr. Borelli, Article 35 provides a mechanism for fining and therefore deterring use of public receptacles for household trash. There is no such bylaw currently. The Finance Committee unanimously recommends adoption of Article 35. Thank you.
On the main motion to amend the general bylaws, Mr. Borelli, speaking for the sponsors, the Select Board.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator, town meeting members. Article 35 will prohibit people from disposing household trash in public receptacles. We have noticed an increase in household trash being placed in our town barrels, which creates unnecessary work for our staff and overfills these barrels. This is almost a daily occurrence, according to staff, as observed by DPW and the RTS staff responsible for collecting refuse from these bins. As a result of household refuse, staff must now make additional pickups due to premature filling that leads to wind-blown litter, odor, unwanted animals, et cetera. Currently, there is no prohibition on its disposal. This article will allow for enforcement. Select Board unanimously recommends adoption of Article 35. Thank you, Ms. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Borelli. And I understand the Finance Committee is not eager to talk about unwanted animals. I never thought of that. So, that opens it up to discussion under the main motion under Article 34.
Mr. Moderator, I'm going to make a motion to amend. I can make it now and then have my statements in support of it, which is basically in response to this motion itself, Your Honor. I mean, to this warrant article itself. So, my motion to amend would be to reduce these fines for the first offense, being remaining a warning; second offense be $25; third offense be $50; and the fourth and subsequent offense be $75. And the reason why I bring this...
Mr. Pignator, sorry. Would you just go down that list one more time? I just wanna make sure I'm writing it down correctly.
I would... I move to amend the fine schedule. Warning, first offense as is.
Yep.
Second offense, reduce the number from $100 to $25. Third offense, reduce the number from $200 to $50. And fourth and subsequent offense, reduce the number from $300 to $75. And the reason why I make this motion, Your Honor, is because... I can't believe that's...
It's an occupational hazard. It's okay. Mr. Pignator, don't worry about it.
The reason I make this motion is because I'm doing a little comparative analysis. And I'm looking at the schedule of the fines for violation of 3.1.8.2, a $50 fine for failing to clear snow from a commercial space. Individuals who are profiting, running a profit... Usually running a business, they fail to remove snow, and they get fined $50, a slap on the wrist. As someone pointed out, it actually is economically in their interest to not plow and to actually just incur the fine. Now, with respect to this bylaw, I recently listened to an article concerning the same issue in the city of Worcester. Some of you may have already... I may have heard it if you're fellow public radio listeners. And it had to do with the same problem in a city environment. And in the city of Worcester, similar to the town of Needham, you have to pay a rather large sum for the yellow bag. And what that article pointed out was the violators of that were usually individuals who could not easily afford the payment of that yellow... For the yellow bag. And what I see in this art... In this is potentially an issue of equity because it may be individuals in this town, people that we don't ordinarily observe, who are simply unable to pay for a yellow bag. Certainly, they should not be scofflaws. Certainly, they should pay a fine. But I think we should do a little comparative analysis here and not make it a punishing number. Set expectations, as one of our members said, with respect to another proposal. And also make it comparable, I think, to the fines that we are setting with respect to the previous amendment... Excuse me, amendment to the bylaws. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Pignator. Let me just stay there, and let me just recite the motion so I... So, we're in total agreement. Mr. Peter Pignator makes a motion to amend under the main motion under Article 35 that would modify and reduce the fine schedule set forth in Section 3.1.1.2 as follows. First offense, warning; second offense, $25; third offense, $50; fourth and subsequent offense, $75.
That is correct, Mr. Moderator.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Pignator. Your motion to amend is on the floor, together with the main motion. Discussion on the motion to amend and the main motion. Yes, in the back.
Glenn Molno, Precinct I. I'm just a little confused as I read this. I'm not sure if it's 100% clear what constitutes household refuse. If I'm walking with my dog and I have the dog poop bag, is that household refuse? If I have a Dunkin' Donuts cup that I'm walking with and I throw it in there as I'm walking by? Because it talks about, you know, it's... The barrels are intended for use of people who are using that park or facility. But at what point is somebody gonna decide that I brought household refuse? And what is that definition? Thanks.
Sure. Question for the sponsors, and I don't wanna get into unwanted animals anymore. But I think Mr. Borelli has a... He'll have a response, and we'll see how that meshes with the text. Mr. Borelli.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I was gonna talk about the animals, but since I'm prohibited, I will clearly respect that. So, it's household trash. It's not the doggy bags, not the coffee cup. The issue that we're having is that we're seeing large bags, hefty bags, thrown in trash receptacles in town. So, kinda you know it when you see it. The idea is to prohibit garbage bags from houses ending up in these receptacles. It's not the one-off. That doesn't cause the issues. It's the bags of trash from someone's home. And I just did wanna come... We have not taken a position, we're not going to, on the fine schedule. But as far as the yellow bags are concerned, we do have a program for those who are unable to afford them to get them for free. So, if that is an issue, or pass it along, if that's a concern, it's a concern to us. We do offer free service to those yellow bags for those who need it. Thank you, Ms. Moderator.
And Mr. Borelli, did you wanna... Just on behalf of the... And Mr. Borelli, did you want to, just on behalf of the proponents, address the motion to amend, or no? You don't have to, I just-
No, not at this time, Mr. Moderator. Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion? Yes, Mr. Pressman.
Aaron Pressman, Precinct D. Not Eric Pressman. I was just quickly looking at the bylaws, and there are a lot of other things that we prohibit, discharge of water, bow and arrows. The fine, maximum fine for these is $50. Most, as you flick through all the other things, improper use of burglar alarm, the fine is $50. It seems unreasonable that the fine for this one particular thing, which does involve potentially an equity issue, should be higher. So I support the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pressman. Discussion? Yes, sir.
Lance Brown, Precinct A. I speak in opposition to the amendment. I believe that those $50 fines throughout the bylaws are a reflection of inflation that has happened over not just the recent spike, but many years. Numbers went into bylaws, they take effort to change, and the Select Board chose not to change the $50 fine for the snow removal because there was no need to add to the potential controversy over the previous article. In this case, a new schedule is being created and reflects a reasonable penalty, in my opinion, for the offense. There's $0 fine for the first offense. I support the numbers laid out by the Select Board.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Discussion? Mr. Heller.
I rise to speak in support of the article, and I'm not really sure how I feel about the amendment. I planned on rising to speak about this before anyone else and set amendment, because I wanted to reflect on how, and I'll try, I think it stays within the four corners, to reflect on and compare this to the RTS and the fines for not using yellow bags there, which on the committee, we have discussed increasing those fines, because continually there's violations of that, and we're continually in the committee talking about compliance issues, accountability. And it's always appalled me, living in this town and being on this committee, and we having to talk about how people have tried to get around, you know, paying for their trash, you know, from when we had to pay for stickers, sharing it amongst the neighborhood by putting it on a placard, not putting it on the windshield. You know, continually people, you know, just throw their black bags in there. And this is another example of people trying to circumvent processes, get around recycling, you know, not wanting to pay their $1.85 for their yellow bags. So I really do not have any sympathy for any violators. And as Mr. Borelli spoke, there are ways that we can accommodate people who have issues with affordability, even when the sticker cost money, there was allowances made for that as well. So this is, and this, I want the town meeting to know, when we get back here and talk about the study about alternatives for dealing with our trash and sustainable models, this is an example of how people are not, are trying, are having difficulty with compliance with recycling, and they will not comply, many, most do, but many will just not comply without fines or incentives. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Heller. Discussion?
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, ma'am, over here.
Kate Winegrad, Precinct E. I rise in support of the article. I wanted to provide a little bit of context to everyone, that I am a mom of two young kids, so I spend more time than I actually would like in our parks with my kids. And I've seen the impact of people bringing their household trash to the parks to get rid of it, people bringing like very large, very full bags, putting it in the bucket. And frankly, we don't have enough garbage receptacles in our parks and public spaces, so it quickly fills it up, and then there's nowhere for people to put their garbage, and then that ends up on the ground, then that ends up on the picnic tables, then that ends up being ripped apart by animals, and it just leads to this sort of waterfall effect of litter and garbage and dirtiness and hazardous conditions. So I just wanted to provide that context and say, I hope you can support this, because I think it is an important thing to keep our town green and clean and safe.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes.
My name is Rebecca Young, and I'm from Precinct I. I'm curious, you know, thinking about the things that we study in this town as we're talking about making a new law. How frequently are these issues of trash in public garbage cans needing to be addressed by the town? You know, is this happening every day that they need to be emptied? How frequently is this requiring the town attention? And if there was more frequent neighborhood pickups of these garbage cans, would that address the issue? One of the reasons I ask is because I do worry about equity issues, that there are families that have economic issues here in Needham, that don't have cars to easily get to the dump, that there are people that, you know, cars don't work for periods of time until they can have enough money to fix their car to get to the dump. I'm curious also about what the follow-through, who would be following through on catching these offenders? In order to, I understand you can go through the trash and find mail from people, but who would be responsible for doing this? Is this something that, you know, once a week, somebody's going to be going through the trash so that we can then go get these, you know, $100 fines? I'd like more information before I would support this warrant.
Thank you, Ms. Young. I'll turn to the sponsors, Mr. Borelli, to provide you with some further information.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Trash has picked up five days a week at public parks. And again, the intent of this is to be able to put signs on barrels saying, no household trash here, right now we can't do that because it's not a bylaw. If we see someone that's putting household trash, to be able to find them, or actually also to be able to do that, don't think of doing it in the first place. And that can be done by the DPW as enforcement, but clearly all bylaw offenses do have police powers to them as well. I also, Mr. Moderator, if I could just comment on the amendment?
Yes.
We are not taking a position on the amendment, but I do just want to point out that in the bylaw, there is a fee schedule or a fine schedule that is similar, that was talking about trash hauling across Needham and what penalty would occur for that. And we took those numbers from that fine schedule. So that's where those numbers came from. We thought it was a comparable comparison to, for that violation, and that's why it is in this bylaw request as well. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Borelli. Discussion? Yes, sir.
Doug Fox, Precinct F. If this passes, I hope we can get an updated Alice's Restaurant for Needham when the DPW is going through all the trash to catch the scofflaws. I've been told before, the reason we can't have trash cans at entrance to the hiking trails is because of this problem, so I actually wanted to ask, if this passes, does that mean we're going to have trash cans at the entrance of all the hiking trails now, which would be a really nice thing to have and would make me support it?
Close call on four corners, Mr. Borelli, don't you think?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. That would be part of a broader conversation on trash receptacles in Needham. Thank you.
Thank you. And further discussion? Yes, ma'am.
Carol Erwitt, Mr. Moderator, Carol Erwitt from Precinct J. No trash talk, but what I would like to say is that with the amended fines, we will still get to put signage on the trash cans, no household goods disposal. I personally am concerned with anyone who needs to, as a social action, who needs to put their trash in public cans. I know that if you allow people to get scholarships at schools, stickers for free, it's often humiliating for people to ask for freebies, especially if they need it. So I am totally in favor of, yes, we should have increased the fines to businesses, but with that said, I am totally in favor of the amendment because I don't think that the crime warrants a larger penalty.
Thank you, Ms. Erwitt. Mr. Dermody?
Bill Dermody, Precinct J. Moved the previous question and the amendment.
Mr. Dermody moves the previous question, discussion of the main motion and discussion of the amendment. The previous question, motion requires a two-thirds vote for passage. On Dermody's motion to previous question, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay?
Nay.
The ayes have it, two-thirds declared on a voice vote. The matter will now come to an immediate vote. Two matters for your attention, two items for your vote. First, there is a motion to amend. Mr. Peter Pingatour offers a motion to amend the main motion under Article 35. His motion would reduce the amounts set forth in the fine schedule, replacing the amounts for second offense through fourth and subsequent offenses as follows. Second offense, $25. Third offense, $50. Fourth or subsequent offense, $75. On the motion to amend, a majority required for passage. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay?
Nay.
Let's try it one more time, let's see how it goes. On the motion to amend, Mr. Pingatour's motion to amend, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay?
Nay.
It's too close, the chair's in doubt, and we're going to have to count it. So I'd ask the tellers to once again take their positions as previously dispersed. Ladies and gentlemen, please, your attention, very important act you're about to do, your voting. So we just need a little quiet so we can all communicate. Thank you very much. Only town meeting members may vote, only town meeting members may be seated on the floor. Mr. Jakes, are we all right? Thank you, sir. This is a vote on Mr. Pingatour's motion to amend. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand, or your, I don't care which hands. Just don't raise both, sorry. Very good. On the motion to amend, all those opposed, please signify by raising your hand. Tellers, is the vote complete? Very well. And I remind tellers to count their own vote as well, as always, I know you do. So it's time for the report. Mr. Barzalai, the ayes, please.
Two.
Two. And the nays?
Six.
Six. Ms. Wolf, the ayes, please.
Thirty.
Thirty. And the nays?
Thirteen.
Thirteen. Ms. Han, the ayes, please.
Three.
Three. And the nays?
Two.
Two. Ms. Young, the ayes, please.
Thirty.
Thirty. Ms. Young, did you speak on this?
I did.
Yeah. So we can't do that. So I'm just going to, we're going to have to just revote real quick and recount. Could I have a volunteer to be?
Why don't you go down? I think I'm great.
Okay. Yeah, that's fine. And Mr. Barzalai, you'll take care of both tables?
Just to be clear, what happens if you, so you're here and you're counting back?
You're replacing Ms. Young. We're going to revote, okay? Because I always ask for unconflicted tellers, and so it's okay, it's no problem, it's no problem, I just remembered. In short, you're fired, Ms. Young. I mean, that's just, I don't know how to put it any other way. You're just, you're out. Okay. Are the tellers in position? Very well. This is on Mr. Pingatour's motion to amend. All in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Excellent, thank you. On the motion to amend, all those opposed, please raise your hand. Is the count complete? Very well. Again, I remind the tellers to count their own vote when they report. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for your accommodation. Mr. Barzalai, the ayes, please.
Four.
Four. And the nays?
Eight.
Eight. Ms. Wolf, the ayes, please.
Thirty.
Thirty. And the nays?
Fourteen.
Fourteen. Ms. Han, the ayes, please.
Thirty-one.
Thirty-one. And the nays?
Twelve.
Twelve. Mr. Brinkhaus, the ayes, please.
Forty-two.
Forty-two. And the nays?
Fourteen.
Fourteen. Ms. Callanan, the ayes, please.
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine. And the nays?
Fourteen.
Fourteen. Thank you, tellers, you may resume your seats in your service, it's much appreciated. Just a moment while we tally. 136 in the affirmative, 62 in the negative. The motion to amend carries- The motion to amend carries. This brings us to the main motion under Article 35, as amended by your action. Mr. Matthew Borelli moves to amend the general bylaws, household refuse. But for the amendment you have just enacted, the text is identical to Article 35 in your warrant. On the main motion, as amended, majority required for passage. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay.
Nay.
The ayes have it. Majority declared on a voice vote. The motion carries, and I declare Article 35 disposed of. Ms. Cooley.
Mr. Moderator, I repeat, ma'am. Mr. Moderator, I move we adjourn this town meeting for this evening until we reconvene.
7:30 PM?
7:30 PM on Monday, May 9.
Excellent. Thank you, Ms. Cooley. Ms. Cooley makes a motion to adjourn this town meeting to resume at a time certain, namely 7:30 PM, Monday, May 9. It is debatable. Is there discussion on the motion? Mr. Alpert? Ladies and gentlemen, please, we're not, we're not gone yet. We can't hear you on your microphone right now, Mr. Alpert. I don't know what's going on.
Mr. Moderator, Paul Alpert, Precinct C. Mr. Moderator, it looks to me like there are no further warrant articles for us to discuss, so why don't we-
There is, Mr. Alpert, there's an omnibus.
I thought I heard you say at the beginning that there was nothing, at, at the beginning of town meeting on Monday, that there was nothing on the omnibus article.
There was nothing on the omnibus article, Mr. Alpert, but we're leaving the town meeting open so that we can reopen the annual town meeting on Sunday, on Monday night. We will address the omnibus article, should anything be filed, and we will move into the special, and then we will return to the annual and sadly dissolve the annual town meeting. And we will depart. So that is the process. And I understand that there's only one there, but it really doesn't make an appreciable difference. And we do want, we just want to, we don't want to be in a position of having to, you know, dissolve the annual town meeting, is what I'm saying. Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, Mr. Alpert, for your inquiry. Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion to adjourn?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. We stand adjourned.